Councilwoman Motazidi, are you on the line?
I am, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'd like to call the order of the July 6th, 2021 regular city council meeting to order. I'd like to take this time to welcome residents watching the council meeting on Lake Forest TV channel 851 on Cox Communications. This channel was launched on July 1st and has increased transparency and access to the city for information. Additionally, we have started broadcasting on AM 1690, so tune in for the city's news and information updates, participating regularly on emergencies, and check them out and let us know what you think. Please let the record reflect that member, councilmember Motazidi will be teleconferencing from home. Votes this evening will be recorded using the city's electronic voting system with city councilmember Motazidi voting by roll call. Let the record show that councilmember Teddermer is absent, but councilman Doug Serbo?
Councilwoman Motazidi is joining us by life-size.
Mark Teddermer is absent. That's what I said. And then we have all three of us present.
Yes.
Okay. We have an invocation tonight?
Yes, indeed, we do. We have Pastor Granados from Centro Cristiano International Church. Please come down to the podium.
Pastor, thank you so much for coming to bless us tonight. And could you say your name again?
I am the pastor, Dr. Arnaldo Granados.
Granados?
Yeah.
Thank you Pastor Granados for being here and blessing our city.
Thank you. I will do in Spanish. Muy buenas tardes, tengan todos ustedes. Mr. Mayor Scott Voits, miembro del Consilio de la Ciudad de Lake Forest, damas y caballeros. Mi nombre es el pastor Dr. Arnaldo Granados, pastor de la Iglesia Centro Cristiano Internacional, fundada en 1988 en este hermoso valle de Salabac, California. Para mí es un honor aceptar la invitación del señor Mayor Pronten Roberto Pequeño para hacer una oración de invocación para la apertura de la reunión del día de hoy, 6 de julio del año 2021, de nuestra amada Ciudad de Lake Forest. Oremos. Padre nuestro que estás en los cielos, venimos ante ti en el nombre de tu hijo amado Jesucristo para orar por nuestra ciudad amada de Lake Forest, California. La palabra de Dios nos dice en el libro del profeta Jeremías, capítulo 29, versículo 7, "Para curar la paz de la ciudad a la cual os hice transportar y rogar por ella a Jehová porque en su paz tendréis vosotros paz." El apóstol San Pablo también nos insta y nos exhorta a orar por todos aquellos que están en eminencia en nuestros gobiernos. Oramos, señor, por los líderes políticos y personas que tú tienes en posiciones de autoridad en esta ciudad, para que tu señor les dé sabiduría e inteligencia para gobernar con justicia, con amor, con servicio y dominio propio. A este Consilio aquí representado en nuestra Ciudad de Lake Forest, señor, para que tú los bendigas, produzcan políticas que beneficien a nuestras comunidades sin excluir a nadie, en especial a los más vulnerables. Oramos por la economía, los negocios, los medios de comunicación, los servicios de seguridad, de salud, médicos, bomberos, policía, para que tú les dé, señor, sabiduría e inteligencia. Bendecimos a sus familias, sus trabajos, y para que ellos trabajen en pro de esta comunidad. Señor, te pedimos por los que están en las calles, en las escuelas, en los colegios, universidades, para que podamos vivir quieta y reposadamente en seguridad y en paz. Oh, señor, usa estos líderes de esta comunidad para que sean instrumentos tuyos. No permitas que el orgullo sea un obstáculo para ellos. Que nuestros líderes sean sensibles al pueblo. Llénalos de amor, de compasión, de sabiduría. Y, señor, el trabajo que ellos hacen no es fácil, pero confiamos en que tú los vas a guiar. Señor, sabemos que los que gobiernan están bajo tu soberanía. Bendíselos, señor, a su familia, y úsalos para el bien de nuestra comunidad. Sea la paz y el descanso dentro de los límites de esta hermosa ciudad, que ellos algún día te conozcan como único y suficiente Salvador. Te lo pedimos todo en el nombre de nuestro señor Jesucristo. Amén y amén.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Pastor. May God continue to bless you and your congregation abundantly. Thank you for blessing us tonight.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Pequeño. I appreciate it, everybody. God bless you.
Thank you, people, for coming tonight. Okay, the Pledge of Allegiance of the Flag of our great nation, celebrating its 245th birthday the other day, and obviously many of you saw the magnificent show that we had here in Lake Forest. Mayor Protem Pequeño, would you please lead us in that pledge?
It would be my honor. Hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as the public may know, March 1st to March 4th, 2020, Governor Newsom proclaimed a California state emergency as a result of the threat of COVID-19. On March 17th, 2020, Governors in Newsom issued an executive order N2920, which allows a local legislative body to hold public meetings via teleconferencing. The electronic accessibility to members of the public seeking to observe and address the legislative body. If you would like to make a comment, please fill out a blue speaker card if you're here. Turn it into our city clerk with your name will be called. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. When you are called to speak, the microphone will illuminate red when your time begins. Illuminate red? When it begins, it turns yellow and the red, and then it turns green. It's supposed to be illuminated when it begins at, not red here, but when it goes to 30 seconds left, it will turn yellow, and when the light begins, turns red and starts flashing, your time has expired. At that time, we ask the public to please conclude their comments. Madam Clerk, have we had any republic, we speak the call?
Yes, we do. We have a number of speakers tonight. We will start with Walter Nabrega, followed by Andrea Alexander, followed by Melinda Wolf.
Good evening, Walter.
Good evening, Mayor, city staff. My name is Walter Nabrega. I'll be making a public comment on renewable energy. Along with researching community choice aggregation and the reasons why Lake Forest should not get involved in a JPA enterprise or Cal choice type of CCA system, I have also been researching the mirage of renewable energy. One of the tenets of CCAs, besides the myth of lower electric rates, which in many cases cost more than local utilities or barely eke out a savings, is the choice of renewable energy for a city's electrical service, specifically solar and wind. My research has me shaking my head. Intermittent variable solar and wind is the largest quantities renewables being used in the power grid is massively overbuilt. I found that from January 21st through May 21st, the amount of renewables curtailed was 1,62,270 megawatts. That represents 1 billion 62,270,000 kilowatt hours of unusable energy. The days I monitored renewables, they never surpassed 61% of the total grid load, and that was around noon at the solar peak time, and declined to an average of 12% in late afternoon. It is going to take many, many years and billions of dollars to have renewables cover 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Batteries are now in use, but are a very small scale. MIT Technology Review wrote that if California relied on batteries to replace fossil fuel power plants, it would have to spend $2.5 trillion to build out enough battery storage to support the grid. I have submitted documents and articles to substantiate my comments. Anyone with access to the internet can easily find this information by typing the following: ISO Today. You can add the app to your phone or iPad and get minute-to-minute info and emergency alerts on the California power grid. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next is Andrea Alexander. And if you could wait until the three-minute mark starts before your comments, that would be great. Thank you.
Hello again.
Hi, I'm Andrea Alexander. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers and staff. I recently attended the Mission Viejo Council meeting to support a friend who was making an inquiry about their elections. After he spoke and detailed what has happened up to this point, I felt moved by the spirit, which could be a dangerous thing, but I spoke about how Lake Forest accomplished districts, how easy it was for us, or at least how it appeared to be easy. We hired consultants who provided maps and we sent, we provided those maps to the public for comment. Districts were approved, decision to do two election cycles was made, ballots created, and off we went, except that what I didn't realize is that it was a very smooth, gentle process, like a duck swimming across a pond. You know me, I'm a very visual learner, right? Well, but underneath, the duck is going madly, paddling his little web feet to make that transition move so gently, and that was staff making it all happen. So it appeared very easy to us, but I imagine it wasn't very easy for them. But anyway, I'm very proud that we went districts, and I think, I hope you are too. It was proven when councilmember Motazidi mentioned or provided the gate locks for two of her constituents. She worked with them. That was very nice. Second thing is Laguna Hills is redeveloping the mall area, and we're monitoring that. And councilmember Hunt acknowledged Lake Forest for our sign designs as you enter our city. He also noted that we did very well in negotiating the nursery project with Toll Brothers. It seems that other cities may be looking to Lake Forest for best practices, and well, they should because we are also fiscally solvent and we, if we could only do, if only we could do more about climate change. I sent you all a video recommendation in the email today. I hope you have a chance to look at that. The third thing I want to talk about is a missed opportunity. I blame myself for this because I didn't come to you sooner this year to remind you, but here's the thing. We had a young man, Blaise Bernstein, who resided in our city and was murdered in our city because he was gay. We need to create solidarity, acceptance, and a welcoming and inclusive city. I hope the council will seriously consider doing something next June, perhaps start the ball rolling in that direction now. Please don't say if we do it for one, we have to do it for all, because if that were the case, why do Huntington Beach, Anaheim, Aliso Viejo, Costa Mesa, Laguna Beach, Irvine, Fullerton, and Santa Ana fly the pride flag every June? Let's be the next city on that list, please.
Come back and remind us on that, and I'm gonna have to ask you to conclude your time.
I still have time.
No, it's, we're in the...
Oh, I meant minus. Oh, sorry.
It's all right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And Ms. Wolf, if you'd like to come to the podium? And if you could wait to start your remarks, I'll give you a cue as soon as that timer's up. The timer's up now. Go right ahead.
Okay. Thank you so much. I'm just so grateful that I live in Lake Forest, and thank you very much for everybody, mayor, councilmembers, staff, Trann especially. I appreciate everything you're doing to help with the installation of the accessible pedestrian signals. It's just refreshing to know that I could take a city bus and cross El Toro in Maryland and feel safe. Having that opportunity to have that extra input makes a huge difference in my life, and I appreciate that. Also was able to go to the post office for the first time in a long, long time, so you know, it's really helping lots of people. I've noticed, had some scouts out there watching people crossing the street, and I think it's making a difference, and it's all because of your commitment, and I appreciate everything you're doing. I know it's taking a long time, as things do, and I just want to bring it up to your attention that if we could get a signal placed at the near Albertson's, which is Ridge Road in Maryland, the sooner the better. And if there's any money anywhere that we could look into getting more accessible pedestrian signals, I think that would be awesome. We're a very incredible city, and I would like to see us have more accessible intersections. As it was pointed out today, yes, we do have great cutouts for wheelchairs, and especially for me as a cane user and a dog user, you don't have to worry about the curbs, because I know where those tactile bumps are. So I appreciate that. And I just want to thank you for everything you've done, and appreciate you, and awesome fireworks, by the way. Best firework show ever. So God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we're glad that we're able to help you make accessibility more easy for you, and we'll get you to Albertson's eventually here. So thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you.
And by the way, when your time's going, if it goes into the red, it's beyond your time and minus signs, that's how we know, because it'll continue to tick downwards. Thank you. Well, that wasn't you, no. It wasn't. Thank you.
Okay. Next series of speakers will be Andrew O'Connor, followed by Randy Johnson, followed by Tony Hayes.
Andrew O'Connor, Foothill Ranch. First, I'd like to start off and say Mayor Voits is very disrespectful for you to be wearing a hat during the Pledge of Allegiance. Common courtesy is to take it off. District 2 councilman, councilwoman Doohurst is compromised by Toll Brothers and her campaign contribution in challenging them on the MeadowsLakeForest.com for not mentioning an elementary school that they promised in their August 2019 PowerPoint to you, Mayor Voits, that you signed off on. We'd like to know why you're absent from the June 15th, 2020 council meeting. Councilman Doohurst is able to log in, but you didn't. Unless you have a note from your doctor, you should have been present electronically. Voits says, "I love Lake Forest. I'll do anything for Lake Forest. I love Lake Forest." Can you explain to us why you sued the city under Orange County Superior Court case number 30? Why you claim $550,000 against the taxpayers of Lake Forest for a leg injury at Pittsford Park that's questionable? I gave the timeline here. September 2017, right there, Thomas Wheeler was aware of the issue. It took March 22nd, 2018, for you to break your leg, the same day the city awarded a contract for the repair. What a coincidence, Mayor. August 30th, 2018, you filed a claim to the city five months after your injury. On January 29th, 2019, you filed a lawsuit 10 months after the injury. October 14th, a hearing was made for summary judgment in your favor. December 14th, 20th, notice of dismissal, the city paid you over $550,000 for a questionable injury that I don't think you sustained. Bob Holtclaw's right here, and he said that you told him over at Commerce Center, your leg injury is because your dog pulled you out of your wheelchair. But you changed the story that you tripped on a little, small, little divot in the concrete. And our city attorney hired a crappy lawyer out of Irvine to represent the city, never brought any witnesses in. Not one witness. Bob could have told you. I could have told you. Jim Gardner could have told you. Randy Johnson could have told you.
Excuse me, Randy, your time's up.
No, it's not. I got 22 seconds.
Your time's up. No, it's...
Okay. Okay. But the city manager never reported to the city council this lawsuit. Never told the city council the settlement, but I'm gonna get it because I submitted an Ask Lake Forest Public Records request. So Voits, you have to come clean. Why did you, and as a mandated reporter, insurance reporter, I have to report fraud, waste, and abuse. You, sir, committed fraud, waste, and abuse against your insurance carrier. Thank you.
Next speaker is Randy Johnson.
Randy Johnson, Lake Forest resident. You know, normally I get up here and stick to the topic. I don't focus on personalities generally up on the council, but today I'm gonna do that, Mr. Voits, okay? Because you're the one that interrupted me, just like you interrupted Andrew O'Connor just a few minutes ago. I had like between 15 and 20 seconds left on my public comment back on June 1st, item number 11, on the marijuana lab issue, okay? And you cut me short. You interrupted me, okay? We have a right, when we come up here by law, to the full 30 seconds. I sent you an email, and I asked for an apology, and you ignored me. You did not get back to me. That's the only reason I'm here today, because apparently you have a real problem owning up to responsibility when you do things wrong, sir. And I expect an apology from you for what you did, for interrupting me when I had time on the clock, and then I lost my train of thought, and I wasn't able to communicate what I wanted to. That's a violation of Ralph M. Brown, and you never got back to me. Is that arrogance on your part? Is that the reason you don't do, is that the reason you don't own up to your mistakes because of blatant arrogance? You're the mayor of Lake Forest, sir. You're supposed to be an example to the rest of the ci... Don't laugh. This is not funny. You're supposed to be an example to the citizens of Lake Forest, and you're not. You're a scalpel, and you avoid responsibility for the mistakes you make, whether they're intentional or not. That's a completely different story, but it doesn't make any difference. Decent people apologize when they make mistakes, and especially a man in your position. When someone comes up here to make a public comment, you tell me my time was up when I still have like about 20 seconds left on the clock. And anybody can ascertain this by going back to that meeting on June 1st, looking at this little light here on the microphone that starts blinking at 30 seconds. About 10 to 12 seconds after it started blinking, that's when you interrupted me, sir. So there's no doubt about it who's in the wrong here. Why do you avoid responsibility as the mayor of Lake Forest? Shame on you. You ought to resign your seat and let Mr. Penqueno take your position, okay? Because you're not, sir, you're not fit to be mayor of the city of Lake Forest. Thank you.
So Randy, I actually do owe you an apology, and I do, I apologize, you take it or not, but the fact that I, when I pushed my mic here, my timer goes off. So that's what it was. So I, my apology, you asked for an apology, I'm gonna give you an apology, so I'm sorry. I apologize. I apologize. Okay, next speaker.
Tony Hayes.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
City Council. My name is Tony Hayes. I live in San Clemente. I would like to say a few words about the Development Impact Fees, or DIFs, paid by owners of new construction to the Transportation Corridors Agency, TCA. I wanted to describe these because Lake Forest has generously paid about $63 million into this fund, more than any other city in Orange County except for Irvine. The formula for calculating fees depends on both the city and proximity to the toll road, but in 2021, for Lake Forest, it's of the order of $6,000 for a new residence and $6 per square foot for commercial, increasing by 2.2% every year. In 2050, values will be approximately doubled. So how is this money being spent? Well, some of it to favorite charities of city council members who sit on the board, and some to advocacy groups that are politically free to support certain TCA board members and undermine others. More specifically, in the last 10 years, the TCA has spent $14 million on marketing, just on marketing cashless toll payments, $10.6 million on political consultants, a theater company, Rodeo, and all regional chambers of commerce, $8.6 million on lobbying and advocacy, especially on SR 241 South Extension, $850,000 on fighting Senate Bill 760, which would block that project. In the recent grand jury report, the grand jury believes that the money could be better spent paying off debt. So why does the TCA not try to pay off its debt? The TCA relies on debt for its existence. If all the debt were paid off, the TCA would have no justification for continued operation and the exorbitant financial benefits that its executives receive. The TCA can borrow large amounts of money for a long time because the buyers of bonds can be assured of income from DIFs and tolls, both of which continue to increase with inflation. Currently, debt should be paid off by 2053, and the toll roads then become free, but at least one high-ranking board member has stated in private that TCA debt will never be eliminated. So what is the answer? The toll roads already belong to Caltrans and The toll roads already belong to Caltrans, and Caltrans is responsible for maintaining the roads at its cost. Toll operations, systems, and phone support are largely outsourced. The TCA and their staff of 65 have almost no direct responsibility, except management of finances. This responsibility should be taken over by Caltrans, and TCA can then be shut down. Yes, Caltrans also assumes the debt, but they have no incentive to drag it out forever. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is identified with the first name Scott from San Clemente, no last name, followed by a speaker named Michelle, followed by Bob Holtclaw.
I'm sorry, what was that? Oh, okay. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Scott from San Clemente. The Orange County Grand Jury recently issued a report titled $28 billion for a $2.8 billion road. It is sad to note that the grand jury found, among other things, that the TCA has no legitimate plans to completely retire construction debt before 2053. Toll collections are currently less than 14% of what is needed to pay down the debt on an annual basis. And instead of paying down the debt, the TCA routinely spends millions of dollars on lobbyists per year. Development impact fees, which were addressed by the previous speaker, are unequal and do not necessarily bring any benefit to the city that pays the taxes, the fees. The grand jury report found that one city adjacent to the toll road is disproportionately the major user of the roads, but they're not a member city of the JPA, and they pay no development impact fees at all. The way we're going, these roads will never be paid off and will never be freeways, as was the original intent. The grand jury has made a recommendation that the TCA create a written plan to, that the existing debt be retired by 2040, which would result in $1 billion in savings versus what has already been spent. And I am urging you, as a member city of the, of the JPA, to recognize the findings of the grand jury and to use your seat on the board to encourage the TCA to follow the grand jury's recommendations. Thank you very much for your time.
Can I, can I make a comment, Mr. Mayor, and maybe a question for those that are speaking on the TCA? Mayor? Can I make a comment?
A comment? Well, the fact that 2053 is supposed to be the target year of the bond payoff. I don't think there's any incentive for the bonds to be pushed back past 2050. But the interest, interesting thing is that, according to the grand jury report, 2040 could be a targeted date, and I think that that's something that has, should be brought up, and I will bring that up to the, to the TCA.
Can I, can I make a comment because this affects my constituency and my district? Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I, I understand that the, the debt model is fully inappropriate, and, and many don't support it. But the alternative is open freeways, and people in my constituency live very, very close to the toll roads. And I've had many people come up to me with the opposite concern, which is, "I don't want to live by something that would be as crowded as the 405 freeway." Not only will it increase noise and traffic in our city, we'll be basically in between two major public highways, the 5 freeway and, of course, the 241. If that 241 opens up to a public road, the noise, like I mentioned, traffic will be tripled, and we'll have more pollution on that side of the, of the city because houses will be just so close to the roads there. So, I have a lot of constituents and residents that say, "Okay, that's fine. Maybe they should admit to the fact that they shouldn't carry on more debt, but keep it a toll road." Because I don't think the alternative necessarily makes things better for residents. There are many cities and many counties across the United States that have toll roads. I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing. It offers an alternative to, to free up traffic on major, major freeways. So, I don't particularly think my residents in my district would support something of an opening up of the freeway there, of the 241. So, I, I personally don't think we would be very happy if those, if, if those roads opened up to the public. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Michelle, if you...
I'm a councilwoman. Thank you.
Do we have timer?
Michelle, could I ask you to hold your comments till the timer starts, please? Thank you. I don't have that information.
Okay.
So, the TCA was formed to construct the two toll road systems, pay down the bonds, and go away. So, what's the true cost of the TCA right now? And how many grand jury reports is it gonna take before they start minding up? I appreciate that some people in Lake Forest don't want the toll roads to ever be free, but there's many families who have been hit with the development impact fees, my family included, from 15 years ago. Will spend an extra $16,000 to $22,000 in our 30-year mortgage to pay for the initial development impact fee that was assessed to our home. This not only drives up the cost of housing in our county, but the cost of doing business. And to the council member who just spoke, if you don't want there to be so much traffic, then you guys need to work with the county to start getting some of this high-density building under control because we're all gonna be choked into congestion if that keeps going on. But anyways...
That's not a county directive.
I'm in my public comments, but thank you. Okay, that was so rude. Anyway, the cost of the toll roads. Caltrans, our tax dollars pay to maintain the toll system. For the last 10 years, Caltrans has provided that it's been over $1 million per toll road. Over $1 million for the 241. They're getting SB 1 funds as well, which was supposed to only be for fix-it. Over $1 million for the 73. Over $1 million for the 261. Over $1 million for the 133. So, there's our tax dollars being used for a road that increases its tolls annually by 2% as well as the development impact fees. They were increased 2% at this last board meeting last month at the toll roads, despite they didn't even need the money. I am sorry. We have Orange County Transportation Authority, who has access to Measure M2 funds, which is our self-imposed local transportation tax, certainly able to address mobility and doing projects to increase mobility in the county. The TCA is a redundant agency. They are fraught with mismanagement and waste. The lobbyists and consultants all seem to donate to the same political action campaigns, or there's a nonprofit that has a political action campaign, and then the board of the TCA board is funded. We have countless examples of that. You know, the promise of the agency was to pay down the bonds, and I don't believe in breaking promises. Our entire state is going to, you know, wearing a handbasket. And if we can't even clean up local, there's no chance for taxpayers in this state. It's just going, the debt at the TCA is going the wrong direction. There's been three grand jury reports now. One said that the TCA, as a JPA, holds 64% of the county JPA debt and could be detrimental not only for our county, but for the state. The last two have just perhaps pointed out many other significant problems. So, I guess we're asking, you know, the city of San Clemente has pulled out of the Joint Powers Authority. We've heard that other cities are considering doing the same. I would ask you, Mayor Voitz, to really just start saying no instead of yes for budgets.
Please conclude your comments, and I, and I will take that up. And I'm actually been told by them that if the TCA was to dissolve, the state of California, Caltrans, would take it over and continue to toll. So, that's what they're telling some of the board members.
And it would be very interesting to see where that authority comes from because the director of Caltrans has nothing to that effect, nor has it been agreed to. But we've seen it in an article recently, and it's highly concerning because it's not what the deal was for taxpayers.
I'll inquire more on that. Thank you.
And we will fight the tolls indefinitely, so...
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Regarding the debt, I just want to clarify something regarding density requirements. That's actually a state mandate.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Bob Holtclaw, followed by Mervyn Henderson.
Hello, my name is Bob Holtclaw, resident of Lake Forest. The handout I just passed out is a critical report of the TCA by the grand jury. The TCA has spent $28 billion on a $2.8 billion road. Lake Forest residents have paid in tolls $64 million, and the TCA has squandered every penny of it. The TCA has spent $10.6 million in donations to elect politicians and lobbyists. Why would an honest agency pay that kind of money just to stay in business? You'll have to ask yourself that. Do residents know that they're paying developer fees that is passed on to them when they buy a new home? I bet a lot of those people don't even use the toll roads, and they're still being fleeced. I have personally watched and attended quite a few TCA meetings, and when Mayor Voitz's boss, Supervisor Don Wagner, makes a motion, Mayor Voitz always supports it and votes for it. Some people might think that's a conflict of interest. But hey, what's a little conflict of interest when you're talking about an agency that's $4.7 billion in debt? And will be $11 billion if they ever pay this off. Mayor Voitz, at the next TCA meeting, we want you to do something that you had never done before, and that's represent the residents and voters of this city. We want you to make a motion to agree to the grand jury recommendations. One, the TCA should follow the grand jury recommendations and implement a plan in writing to pay off the debt by 2040. It should be 2030. And must make the toll roads free to the public. Two, the TCA should not expand its mandate past the Oso Parkway in writing. Not that we don't trust you, but we don't. Three, the money that should be spent on any project consultant or engineer should be not spent on anything else but connected with the 241 toll road. If you can't bring yourself to making this motion, I suggest maybe you should resign and have one of the other councilmen represent the residents here of Lake Forest. Thank you.
Thank you.
And final speaker is, is it, I'm sorry, is it Mervyn Henderson? Martin, thank you.
And before the, the, my time starts, I'm wondering if Keith or Mal can answer a question for me. I'm gonna speak about the lawsuit that Mr. Voitz filed against the city. And to my knowledge, there's been no public record of it, and I'm wondering what the terms of that lawsuit were and what the results were. Because as I speak, I would like to, I'd like to speak factually.
Does your time start?
I hope not. I asked him to. I asked him to hold it.
You're speaking publicly right now. You should have gone to the dais then.
I just asked for clarification. So, do you want, not want to give me clarification? Is that what you're saying?
Well, he's not clarifying.
I'm asking you. You're in charge of the meeting, but I'm asking them, and you're telling me my time has started. So, what's it gonna be?
Your time has started if you give my...
Okay, so you don't want, you don't want them to tell us what the terms of the, what the terms of the lawsuit were? Is that correct? Yes or no?
Terms of the lawsuit?
Terms of the lawsuit that you filed against the city.
This isn't a public debate right now, so it's your, your public...
Well, you're taking up my time. You're taking up my time. Fine. Let's go. Let's go. My understanding is this, is that you filed a lawsuit against the city claiming that you were so mentally, emotionally, and physically shattered that you could no longer work. And you sued the city for an undisclosed amount of money for future lost wages. You also sued the city because you claimed that you were so physically, emotionally, and mentally shattered that you couldn't engage in social activities with your wife and other people. Now, if you can't do that, if you can't withstand the, the pressures and the stress of working your day job, how in the world are we to expect that you can withstand the pressures of the night job of doing this thing here? Because you're responsible for the public safety of 86,000 people. You're responsible for the, the finances of millions and millions of dollars that these people paid to you guys. So, I expect a response tonight. I expect an answer on behalf of 86,000 people of why we should believe that you're competent and capable of performing as a city councilman when you publicly declared in a court of law that you were not. That you were looking for money. We deserve to know. And I know how this plays out, Scott. I'm gonna walk away, and you're gonna say next. Well, I'll tell you what. Every councilman up here needs to ask the same question of him because your constituents deserve to know. 86,000 people deserve to know. Everybody in here deserves to know why he's competent to hold that job, but he's not competent enough to hold his day job. Everybody deserves an answer. A response or a resignation. My time is up.
Thank you. I don't know where you guys got $550,000. The insurance company sued the city for payment, and that was basically it. So, the fact that if you guys got mixed up with my, my personal injury from my construction accident, that was far more than $1 million. And so, well, you may be getting it mixed up, but the fact is, what you're claiming with the city was nothing... Okay. Is that our final?
Mr. Mayor, that concludes our public comment.
All right. Well, that brings us to Consent Calendar. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered routine and will be engaged with one vote. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council or staff request specific items to be removed from the Consent Calendar for separate action. There have been, have there been any requests?
I have one request, one speaker that's requesting to speak on three items on the Consent Calendar.
All right. What items are those?
So, that's Item 6, 12, and 13.
And 13. All right, we'll, we'll address that. There are warrants on the register for the county of Orange. I am an employee of the county of Orange, but I do not work for the department that generated the warrants. Because the county of Orange is a public agency, and because I do not work for the department in question, I have determined that I have none interest in these warrants, and I will be voting on these items. Councilwoman Motasi, are you there?
I am. I have a, there is a warrant on the register to the gas company. I'm an employee of the gas company and have determined that I have a remote interest in this warrant and will abstain from voting on the warrant.
Do I have a motion for... And then we're gonna pull 6, 12, and 13. So, there's been a motion and a second for the remainder.
So, I'll just do a quick roll call vote, if that's okay. All right, Mayor Voitz?
Yes.
Mayor Portempequeno? Councilmember Serbo? Councilmember Motasi?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay, that brings us to...
So, item, you want to start with Item 6? Okay. So, Item 6 is the adoption of the Revised Fiscal Year Annual Action Plan, the expenditures for the community development block grant funds. We have one speaker. It's Andy O'Connor.
First, did you pass on my packet to the council? Andrew O'Connor, Foothill Ranch. I just need to clarify a couple of things. First, with Councilmember Dewhurst, District 2, she's crying about too much traffic on the 241. But Councilman Dewhurst, you just approved 700 homes in Akase Nursery, 33,000 homes, low income. So, you're talking on both sides of your mouth. Mayor Voitz, if you don't understand, you, you filed a claim on August 30th, 2018 to the city. They didn't respond in 45 days. You filed a lawsuit January 29th, 2019 for personal injury at Pittsburgh Park because you broke your femur.
Are we talking about Item Number 6, or...
I just want a clarification.
Well, just, just keep on your topic right now.
Okay. All right. I just want to clarify. So, we're talking about me being a mandated reporter. I want to show you. This is my California Department Insurance License. And this is my federal license right here for Medicare health insurance. And the first thing I have to be is a mandated reporter for fraud, waste, and abuse. to be is a mandated reporter for fraud, waste, and abuse by city governments or individuals. I've already pointed out that you, on that ticket, Mayor, if in your packet, you can see, I sent a letter to Secretary of the Department of Treasury Janet Yellen, and I sent electronically, and they've already responded back to you, to me. Mr. O'Connor, thank you very much, we want to talk to you more, we're looking forward to your documents, and we'll be reaching out to you to have a conference call early next week. So what I'm talking about is the document right here, the City of Lake Forest CDBG Annual Action Plan. You guys have got to be kidding me. You really put this out? Can you believe you're charging the federal government $98,000 for administration? That's Gail Ackerman's job right there, we already paid her $100,000. You're soaking the federal government for $98,000 more to do her job? How about this one? El Toro Park Improvements. You're charging the federal government $91,470 in various improvements, including upgraded electrical distribution cabinet, park lighting, installation of security gates at restrooms? What's that have to do with COVID? It's nothing to do with COVID, but you sucked out $92,000. How about this one? Paint program, citywide, $112,000. Seriously? I like this one. $116,000 for public facility improvements that we paid $71 million for this building. You're charging the federal government $116,000 in the future for COVID. That is fraud, waste, and abuse. I'm a mandated reporter. I wrote the letters to the Secretary of Treasury. You have a lot to answer to, Mayor, and I ask you to take the hat off, it's disrespectful, but you continue to wear it.
Thank you for your comments.
So, so Mr. Mayor, he has, yeah, he would like to comment also.
I'm sorry, I didn't see, is he doing 12 and 13?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, Andy, please. I didn't, I didn't know who was pulling them.
I want three minutes.
We're going to restart that for you.
It's interesting, this lawsuit that you filed against the city, it's all documented, timelines, things like that, and the money we spent for a lawyer, over $100,000, $500,000 to you. If Wheeler had done his job, he could have gone to Home Depot and get Quick Right. Concrete matching compound costs eight bucks at Home Depot.
So, and we've combined your next two items together, so you have, you have six minutes total.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I just wanted to bring that up, clarify it, I know it's kind of interesting. Number 12, the Bakers, Irvine, Tribuco intersection. I'm against this agreement with City of Irvine. I see no need to move a 10-foot diameter, Southern California, limestone, Santiago, high-power 66 KV line. 66 KV line, you know how, I try to put my arms around it. It's 10 feet around, that's nine, okay? If you put this in a circle, this is the diameter of that KV line you want to move. It's not your simple wood telephone pole. You're trying to move a 10-foot 66 KV line? Ridiculous. What for? There's a right-hand turn lane there already that people aren't even using. Why don't you go to Starbucks or McDonald's and look for yourself and do your own survey that the right-hand lane is not even used? Baker's a main thoroughfare for Baker Ranch, Foothill Ranch, Portola to go the I-5. There's very little need to turn right on Irvine Boulevard. Thanks to the leadership of Leah Basile, she pioneered the eastbound Baker onto Tribuco herself because Wheeler, for whatever reason, never did it, but she did. So the intersection of Baker and Irvine Boulevard, Tribuco, it's done. Why are we spending money there? What more are you going to prove? Okay? Same thing further when you go down to Geronimo. People do not turn right on Geronimo. They're going through the freeway. Why are we doing this? Who came up 50%? We have to pay 50%? Lake Irvine has to pay? It's ridiculous. 90-10 Irvine, just like they stuck the jail in their backyard, we're going to get charged 50% for this intersection improvement? It's ridiculous. Okay? Synchronizing the signal lights in the city? Okay? Look at my report. There are 17 intersections total, okay? Two of them are at the 241, and the other ones are at Chinook and Serrano. All you need is a pedestrian at Chinook or Serrano coming out of the, out of the retail store, boom, I want the pedestrian crossing, boom, the whole synchronization is out the window. But we spent millions of dollars on that, didn't we, Mayor? You're just going to, you're going to stamp it again, aren't you, just like El Toro? Doesn't make any sense. It's not like we made the roads wider or did anything to the intersection. It was all software, just like I talked about El Toro. And what do we have on this agenda? We're going to do it all over again on Lake Forest. It's, I guess it's already done, but explain to me, Mayor, how do we spend this much money on people sitting behind their desks, doing software upgrades when there's no hardware that was done? Can you justify the hundreds of thousands of dollars we spent on, on this synchro project? You can't. And, you know, Councilman Serbo, it starts in your district, it goes down to Voits's district, it ends in Pequeno's district. Meet me for breakfast, lunch, dinner, let's ride Lake Forest together, and I'll show you how it doesn't work, but you're all too chicken to do it. I have a dash cam on my, on my car, it cost me $90. You know, I, I can show you there, I'll send it to you, and where I, where I stop and have to stop, it makes no sense. This synchronization did not work, but we spent tons of money on it to Caltrans. Do you know Caltrans is over budgeted by 30 people? 30%, they have 30% too many people working there, but we just glammed right in there, Lake Forest, let's write another check to Caltrans, get right in there, for something that doesn't work? Would you spend money on something that doesn't work, Mayor? Go ahead and answer, yes or no? I sure as hell went, but you guys on the council just keep rubber stamping, just keep spending money, whether it's to Caltrans or consultants, I bring it up time and time again. I don't think any of the people in the council even look at these documents, because you can't refute what I'm saying. It doesn't make sense when you look at the stuff, black and white. It's looking at you right there like, why are we doing that for? And you guys can't explain why, but you do it. It's the dumbest thing I've ever seen. And again, if Wheeler was on his game, all he had to do was spend eight bucks, would have fixed the hole, and little Scotty wouldn't have tipped out of his wheelchair, which never happened, by the way. If the lawyer did a better job and brought witnesses in, five of us would have told us that right over the Commerce Center, he claimed the dog pulled him out of the wheelchair. But he's Scott. Disrespecting the citizens, disrespecting the flag, still up there with his hat on. What a joke.
So that completes our public comment for consent.
Okay, well, we'll take an entertainment for six, seven, or six, 12, and 13. So move. Second, we'll call, roll call.
Okay, Mayor Voits?
Aye.
Mayor Portempequeno?
Aye.
Councilmember Serbo?
Aye.
Councilmember Motasi?
Aye.
Motion passes, 4-0.
That brings us to item number 15. Item 15 is? A public hearing.
Item number 15 is a public hearing. It's the draft substantial amendment to the Community Development Block Grant Program Fiscal Year 1920 Annual Action Plan for allocation of CDBGCV Act Round 3 funds. We have one public speaker for this item.
Okay, well, I'll open the, the public comments, or open the public hearing. City Speaker, would you please?
Mayor, members of the city council, I'll invite up Ron Santos to give you a presentation on the CDBG funds.
So we, we do have one public comment for this? I'd like to call him up before we bring Ron up, please. Yeah, please bring him.
Andrew O'Connor?
Six and 15 overlap, it's just that your fiscal years, one's 1920, the other one's 2021, like that, but it's the same letter I sent to the Secretary Janet Yellen today, and I have all the documents that's sent. I've already sent it, I've already mailed it to her, so she has it, we'll probably talk next week. But if you look at a public facility improvements, public facility improvements, $116,000. What are we doing, taking CARES money to fix up a $71 million building that's less than two years old? Can you explain that to me, Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah. Are you going to ask someone to explain it to you? Don't you think you should? Or are you just going to rubber stamp this? Small business assistance, that's good, I'm glad to see that, $212,000, that's great. But can I get a list of who these small businesses are? Why not? How did you get to $212,000? How do I get that list, Mayor? Can you make that available for me? Public services, $120,000. Social services that provide a safety net for lower-income households impacted by the coronavirus pandemic. That's great. Can you give me the details that back up this $120,000, Gail Ackerman? It's not there. It's supposed to be, but it's not there. Okay? Program administration, $111,000, $112,000. Grant oversight and coordination. She's sitting right there. Is she getting two salaries? Total, $519,000, almost $560,000. Boy, I tell you, Janet Yellen and I are going to have a great conversation. Okay? You put this out, it's right there. Here's a big number, I want the backup details for it, Mayor. You think you can get that for me by next week? Otherwise Janet Yellen's going to ask you for it. I'm just giving you a heads up, because Secretary of Treasury Janet Yellen, Washington D.C., they're going to send a team in here, they have jackets on and all that stuff, and probably going through files and looking at everything. Okay? Are you ready for that? Better be. Percentage of funds, 22% for, for target areas. 22%. You know where the other 78% went? Citywide, but not for COVID. You guys have a lot of answers to ask. What do you think there, D2 D-Wars? You ready to talk to the federal government on these documents? City Attorney Richardson? Are you ready to talk? What? You guys have set yourselves up for a big problem. Fraud, waste, and abuse. I'm a mandated reporter, I've done my part, letter's been sent, documents have been sent. You need to explain where the money's going, with details, and why you're spending $100,000 on this building that's $71 million and it's two years old. Fraud, waste, and abuse.
May we all have listened to the presentation?
Mayor, members of the city council, Ron will come up and give a presentation on the action plan.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. This item is an amendment to the fiscal year 2019-2020 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan, the purpose of which is to allocate CDBGCV Round 3 funds. CDBGCV, or coronavirus, is a federal grant from the, from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, provided under the CARES Act for the purpose of preventing, preparing, or responding to local impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. Pursuant to CDB regulations, the funds must be primarily, the funds must primarily benefit low- and moderate-income persons or meet an urgent need. The CARES Act included three rounds of funding, two of which consisted of direct funding to Lake Forest. In total, the city would receive just over $862,000 and is allowed three years to spend 80% of the funds and six years to spend 100%. The proposed amendment has three primary objectives. The first is to replace regular CDBG funds previously allocated for COVID-19 pandemic response with CDBGCV funds. Doing so would minimize the regulatory and administrative constraints of spending blended funds and simplify the requirements for small businesses receiving grant funding. The second objective is to allocate the balance of the CV funds to four expenditure categories: public services, business grants, public facilities, and program administration. This slide illustrates the distribution of all available CV funds, CV1 and CV3 funds combined, under the proposed expenditure plan. This slide shows the CDBGCV allocations approved by the city council in September of 2020 on the left, and the allocations proposed as part of this amendment incorporating Round 3 funding on the right. In total, the city council has already approved the allocation of approximately $190,000 for local nonprofit organizations, providing various forms of assistance to low- and moderate-income Lake Forest residents, and $236,000 for small business grants. The first phase of the business grant program allocated 81 $1,000 grants, while the second phase is pending council action tonight, and as recommended, further direction from the ad hoc committee. Finally, the third objective of the recommended action is to authorize the CDBG ad hoc committee, which includes Mayor Voits and Councilman Tetmer, to approve more specific funding allocations within the broader city council-approved spending categories and limits. Approval of the proposed plan this evening would allow the city to meet the city, to meet HUD's August 16th deadline for submitting the amended action plan, and would allow additional time to receive and evaluate proposals for use of funding, and would provide flexibility by empowering the ad hoc committee to determine the specific use of funds that best addresses critical needs and avoids redundancy with state programs. As discussed in the staff report, the state recently initiated a grant program that will provide up to $10 million grants for restaurants and similar businesses. In addition, rent protections were extended just last week for an additional three months. And the state is considering a program that would pay for all back rent for income-qualified residents. These programs may have implications with respect to spending priorities for the CDBGCV This final slide, which is Attachment 2 of your staff reports, shows the original combined CDBG and CDBGCV allocations, the proposed CV allocations, and the totals for the two rounds of CV funding combined, as proposed. Staff is recommending that the city council approve the draft amended 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan, authorize the CDBG ad hoc committee to approve more specific allocations, and approve the corresponding budget resolution provided as Attachment 3. That concludes staff's presentation on this item, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
We've already had our public input on that, so I'm, I'm going to ask that we close the public hearing, and I ask the council if you have any questions over on. I, I'd actually do, the amount that we're receiving is $886,000 from the government. Ron, can you explain to the public and some of us on council, where is that actually the money coming from, to where, is that more than we normally get, or less?
So the, the CDBGCV funds are pandemic response-specific funds. They are separate from the annual regular CDBG funds. And part of the action this evening would be to reallocate regular CDBG funds that was previously allocated for pandemic response back to regular CDBG purposes and to, to backfill essentially that spending with this new round of funding, which wasn't anticipated when the first round of funding expenditure was approved.
So I'll look if you already, we've given out just under $100,000, around $80,000 to the businesses in, in grants?
That's correct.
And so, so, and someone of the public speakers asked about the, the money that's forecasted to go out to the grants. Why don't you explain to that how we're working that?
So there were 81 $1,000 grants that were issued to local businesses. So there were 81 1,000 grants that were issued to local businesses as a pandemic response effort. So this was funding, grant funding, that reimbursed those businesses for expenses that they incurred, such as purchase of PPE, or in some cases, loss of revenue. There were 81 grants, and the council had authorized up to 85. So there's approximately just under 4,000 of that original grant funding that was not allocated, as we did not have sufficient applicants to spend the remaining 4,000.
Second round of grants that'll be going out will be larger?
We do have additional funding. We have funding that was from the second phase of the grant program, and then staff is proposing additional funding for business grant programs from this new source of funding, the CV3 grant. And so the total grant funding for business that is proposed with the CV1 and CV3 combined is 332,000, just over 332,000.
And that goes out to our local businesses and restaurants?
Correct.
Yeah, please.
Great, thank you, Mayor. In terms of publicizing this for local businesses, is there an active method that we use, or how do businesses find out about these grants availability?
What the ad hoc committee had been discussing for the funds, the balance of the funds that would be allocated for businesses, is potentially targeting certain sectors of the local economy, such as hotels, for example, that had been hit particularly hard. That's a discussion that is pending further discussion, I should say, with the ad hoc committee in terms of the direction for use of that grant funding. Do we want to, for example, look at targeting specific sectors? Do we want to open it up more broadly to all businesses? As I mentioned, the state recently initiated this program that is providing up to 10 million per business, 5 million per location for restaurants, and similar business cafes, that sort of thing. And so, given that, there's some consideration to whether there would be redundancy if the city were assisting restaurants in particular, for example, with that state program. So that's something that staff would like to further review with the city's CDBG ad hoc committee.
So the application process, I imagine it's online, and has a certain criteria that they have to meet to be eligible. And then what's the timeframe for application, approval, and distribution of funds?
So at this point, the expenditure of the balance of the funds for the business program is pending council approval. We have not made applications available or otherwise advertise that program, because the council would need to approve that funding in advance. For the funding that was already spent, we did a direct outreach to businesses. We provided information on our website, and social media, and various other digital platforms, Facebook, et cetera.
Great, thank you.
Do we hear anything further? I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we go with staff recommendation.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
Mayor Voits?
Yes.
Mayor Portempequio.
Aye.
Councilmember Servbo.
Aye.
Councilmember Motazidi.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. Thank you, Ron. That brings us to item number 16.
Mayor, members of the City Council, item 16 is in commission appointment, and our city clerk, Lisa, will give a short summary, and then turn it over to the mayor.
Okay.
Hi, Mayor and Councilmembers. As you know, there is currently an opening on the Community Services Commission. Sadly, that opening is because of the passing of Jim Rosenberg. Mr. Rosenberg was appointed to the commission almost four years ago by Mayor Voits. So this opening will be to fill that seat for the remainder of the term through 2022 in December. We advertised for applications for a three-week period between June 3 and June 24. Eight applications were received and complete, and are attached to your staff report this evening. That is the substance of my report, and I'm happy to read off those names when you're ready.
Well, Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers for this item?
Actually, I do have one speaker, Andrew O'Connor.
Can we have a timer?
Andrew O'Connor, Foothill Ranch.
He's waiting for the time. Okay.
Andrew O'Connor, Foothill Ranch. I'll say it again, you guys don't read the documents. And I'm just gonna talk about item six, it's in your full pack agenda, it's page 80. It says her Community Development Block Grant, section three and four. Can you guys not read? It says right there to move it from one account to another. That's not what you're supposed to be doing.
We're on appointments. We're on appointments.
Okay. So here we are, appointments. Let's go back to when Andy O'Connor came to the dice. It was about 10 or 12 other people wanting to fill Leah Basil's position. I have the timer up there, I don't know where I'm at, I'll pace myself, thank you. And, you know, a lot of people were good. There's a lot of qualified people. I saw more qualified people than myself in that position. I was really wanting to go for them. One is our Foothill Ranch Homeowners Association member, she's an accountant, she would have knocked it out of the park. But you know what I learned from there? It was a popularity contest. We didn't have a chance, because you guys already had Mike James. You took Mike James, you two guys weren't here. Voits was there, Tetmer, D worse was there. It was already decided, so why did 10 people go through this whole thing of saying they want to help the city? And then, what was really interesting, Sheriff Barnes, like the phoenix, was in the audience. Never been to a city council meeting, and there he was. That should have tipped you right off, Michael James. So my question is, is this another popularity contest tonight, Mayor? Is that what you're gonna do? You know, when you go out to bid, you always say, we gotta get bids from three or four different companies, and this is how we grade, and we use a matrix. I use a matrix as a teacher, and I grade my kids in school. I think matrix is good, black and white. Are we gonna see a matrix tonight, Mayor, on the selection of these eight candidates? Simple question, yes or no? Matrix for these eight candidates? Well, I guess not. Okay, I'll find out in a few minutes. The other thing is, again, there's some intelligent people. We have an attorney, we have a female who's a regulatory compliance analyst, we even have your neighbor. So my bet is your neighbor's gonna get it. Okay? I could be wrong. Another individual who, you know, just like me, tried to get Leah's position, she's back, I congratulate her, I think that's good. But, and then I looked at, you know, their profiles, what they did, I think only one person ever said they came to the city council to address them. And only one that even follows the city council. But yet these eight people want to be on this commission, just kinda odd to me how these people feel they're qualified. But, you know, if they're doing it, good for them. So then I look out in the audience, I don't see eight new faces out here, you know? Maybe you already told the person who's gonna get it, so they'll be here. But I expected to see these eight candidates, just like, am I gonna get it? Am I gonna get it? Okay. So pop goes the weasel, we'll find out in a few seconds who gets it. And congratulations, by the way. You know, I hope you do a good job. But, believe me, you gotta work with this guy.
Thank you for your comments.
Good luck.
Okay.
Can I just clarify something, Mr. Mayor? I'd like to be called Councilwoman Motazidi, that is my legal last name, and I don't know why I'm being called by a different last name. I'd like the record to reflect that, please. I respect other individuals and call them by their last names, or whatever they prefer, and I expect the same. Thank you.
Councilwoman Motazidi, we take that into consideration. I did hear that, and I'll correct them when they say that again. Thank you. I'm sorry about that. So, Madam Clerk, why don't we go through, roll the list, and if you're here to speak tonight, or here to be considered, I've read through all the appointments, and I want to thank everybody for applying. You know, it is a good way, a stepping stone to get involved with the community, but we have so many other ways that we can. Leadership Academy, safety, we have a search program now, we have the parade committee, that hopefully next year, we're gonna start that up again. So I think that we have many avenues to be involved with the community. So I want to thank everybody. We do have some very qualified, Andy did say we did have some very qualified candidates, and I'd just like to hear who's here tonight. Thank you.
Would you like me to just start calling each one?
Yeah, please.
Okay. First applicant, Devin Bijon. Devin Bijon?
And if you are here, you have three minutes to come up to the podium, and so, thank you, Devin, for at least applying.
Okay. Next applicant, Sunil Desuza.
I think you made a first.
Next applicant, Steve Edwards.
Good evening. I just thought I'd introduce myself, since you're going through the process. My name is Steve Edwards. I'm a resident of the city since 1997. I raised my family here, my two daughters. They've been involved in sports for most of their lives, so I've got experience working in AYSO, with club soccer, also girl softball. I also served in the community at large, in the Orange County Fire Department for 30 years. I'm retired now. I saw the application listed on Facebook, and thought it was an opportunity for me to give back to the community that I still live in. So, thank you.
Thank you, Steve, and thank you for your service to the community as a firefighter.
Next applicant, Nathaniel Epstein. Nathaniel? Okay. Next applicant, Mauricio Escobar. Mauricio? Applicant Kelly Holliday.
Hello, Council, Mayor. Some of you might recognize me, I did run for a council position back in 2019, it was, I believe, the appointment position. I've been a resident here in Lake Forest for 13 years. My husband and I raised our daughter Kayla here. Was a participant in volunteering in our local schools. I've worked with Mr. Wheeler on some community traffic improvements, have worked with my homeowners' association with numerous improvements in Serrano Park. I continue to be very proud of my city, and would welcome this opportunity to serve on the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kelly.
Next applicant is Joseph Pellegrini. Is Joseph here this evening? Okay. And final applicant, Susie Betts.
Evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to...
Is there something, will you turn that mic up a little bit? It seems like... Better.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Susie Betts. My husband and I live in District 3, and you'll forgive me, I'm nervous, I wasn't expecting to speak. I welcome this opportunity. Many of you may have already known me. I started the initiative of Clean Lake Forest with Mayor Portempequio, and it really has been my privilege just to be a good steward of this community, and to plant some seeds to how we can keep cleaning up the community, keep our parks, our trails clean, but not just do it as a city, that we plant it as a community initiative, and that everybody takes ownership and responsibility for this. So please forgive me, I'm very nervous, and I wasn't expecting to speak. Thank you.
Yes. Well, you know, we have an abundance of qualified candidates. I'm sorry, more didn't come to present themselves tonight, and I think that what we have is a position that was a long-term position held by someone who's had such institutional knowledge on the city, and involved with the city for so many years. So my choice tonight, if I could be so kind to get a second, would be, Susie, I think that your activism in the community, and starting Clean Lake Forest, is something that is commendable. I think that we have street sweeping, but to me, the street sweeping's not doing its job, because it's going too fast, or whatever. But I think that what you've done to bring the community together, to get out there and clean the streets, is something that is commendable, and I thank you for that. I think the residents have already seen that. I think that right after our huge fireworks display at the sports park, you had your members out on the ball fields and the surrounding streets, is that correct? So the nomination would be for you to be the Community Service Commissioner from the third?
I can second. Sorry.
I want to thank everybody for participating, and I want to thank, and encourage them to stay involved, because that's actually how we see people that come up, and your involvement and your participation and teamwork with the city staff, and with us as council members, and the commissioners are out there. Like I said, my hope and vision is that we have a CERTS member or two in every neighborhood of the city in the next few years, because I think that the next catastrophic earthquake, or shutdown, is gonna happen. I think the CERTS members are trained, and they've got a foot in the door with knowing staff, and knowing what we're doing, and have connections. And so I think that that's a good way for you to get involved with us. And so, thank you for those that failed out a application, and put it in. And thank you, Susie, for being willing to serve. That brings us to the next item.
Mayor and members of the City Council, our next item is community choice aggregation. We'll have a few presenters, and I'll bring up our senior management analyst, Adrian, and he will go through a PowerPoint, and then you'll have two speakers.
Do we have any public speaking on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do. This is item 17, we have three speakers.
Okay, well, might as well go through the public speaking first.
I'm gonna queue that up first. So the first speaker is Walter Nabrega, followed by Randy Johnson, followed by Andrew O'Connor. It'll just take us a minute to queue up the time.
Good evening again. It took 10 seconds right off me, right away. I will be commenting on item 17, community choice aggregations and related issues. As I've stated and documented in earlier meetings, starting a CCA or joining a JPA will be a very risky venture for the next couple of years, and that was confirmed by Mr. Fulmer during the May 10 Town Hall. A case in point is Western Community Energy's bankruptcy, and its eventual deregistering as a joint power authority. If you recall, weeks before the bankruptcy announcement, I had submitted information to the council of an aberration in the Western Community Energy's JRC numbers. Who knew it was that serious? Now watch for the nasty details, which have now not yet been disclosed. Western Community Energy's JPA/CCA customers may be on the hook for reentry fees back to SCE if Western Community Energy cannot come up with the money to cover the reentry fees. Please speak to that issue, Mr. Fulmer. Please speak to that issue, Mr. Fulmer. A very hot summer for the West, Western United States with increased uses of air conditionings during peak hours and at times when renewables have dropped to fifteen percent on the grid load is one of the times when resource adequacy can help secure grid reliability. As I stated in the last council meeting, resource adequacy cost is one of the biggest problems for CCAs going forward. Resource adequacy is increasing CCA's costs, so much so that Cal Choice made an application for waivers for a number of their CCAs. This is a complicated matter and in essence will have many CCAs increasing their electric rates to cover their costs. As on my last check, the waivers were, were denied. King City Community Power shows a half, half, half a percent savings of fifty-four cents per month, six dollars and forty-eight cents per year. Is the difference because King City only supplies twenty-eight percent renewables versus PG&E's thirty-nine percent? Is King City in violation of the twenty-twenty renewable portfolio standard, which is thirty-three percent? King is the only CCA that I researched who didn't tell their residents the standard CCA line that they would save one to two percent on their electric rates. In fact, the only thing I found that was deceptive in their literature was their faq's. The question, how does King City benefit from CCA? The answer was KCCP procures power for King City, therefore the profits typically earned by PG&E will now be directed to the benefit of Kings, King City, community. This statement is incorrect because electric, electricity supplied by utility is a direct pass-through of, of product cost. Only no profit is debt, no profit is added. This is a CPUC rule. Maybe Mr. Fulmer can address this mistaken statement made by many CCAs. I will finish with a quote from IMPE. Success is a collection of problems solved. I don't think CCAs have their problems solved.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Randy Johnson.
Johnson, Lake Forest. Uh, you know, uh, once again, uh, I, I sent you a two-page report here and I thank the city clerk for posting this currently. So, you know, people who are watching this on their computer or something can actually look at my report. Um, first of all, I protest that the Lake Forest government has not, uh, you know, offered any type of voice from an opposing voice about CCAs. Uh, they're all CCAs that have been invited for these live presentations, okay? Or consultants who were paid by the CCAs. You haven't even invited, invited, uh, Southern Cal Edison, for God's sakes, who's a competitor of these organizations who could actually come and, and could tell us what features and benefits they can offer us. How is that an education program versus an indoctrination program? And nobody in the council, I've mentioned this before, nobody brings it up. So I can only assume that silence is complicity. I don't know why nobody talks about this. It's an obvious flaw in the design. Um, and so we need some full disclosure here as far as the disadvantages of these CCAs and not just a bunch of rah-rah cheerleader stuff, the people come up here and tell us how great the CCAs are. They aren't. And Western Community Energy is an example of that, okay? They served a hundred and thirteen thousand rate payers in six small cities and now they're going bankrupt, Chapter Nine, and they're going out of business. And now SCE has to, uh, accept these rate payers or customers back, okay? And apparently, from what I understand, just like Walter said here, um, that the rate payers might pay a surcharge, okay? Uh, because they're returning to SCE. Uh, so, you know, unless Western Community Energy can come up with the money, which they can't, they're bankrupt, okay? And we're talking a hundred million dollars here in debt when they only have around fifty million dollars in assets, okay? I mean, it's so crazy. Um, and this is just one example. It's gonna continue happening. It's gonna continue happening. This wasn't just like, oh my God, uh, just the perfect storm. I'm sure there's some incompetence there that will come out later. As soon as the creditors or lenders dig their teeth into this information in bankruptcy court, we'll find out what really happened. So I don't want to hear any excuses. The fact is, they went bankrupt and it's on them, okay? So, um, also the city of Lake Forest, you know, should, uh, help out Southern Cal Edison. Use the, uh, leaflet and use the newsletter and use the website in order to promote what they have to offer with green energy. If you, if you promote green energy, why aren't you promoting their programs and helping them out to market it? And nobody talks about that. I discussed this before and nobody seems to care. So it just goes to show, I think you folks are all pro-CCA. I really do. And eventually, you know, you're gonna give us one of these things and it's gonna end up being a disaster.
Thank you for your comments.
And our final speaker is Andrew O'Connor.
Andrew O'Connor, Foothill Ranch. I thought we were off this CCA crazy train when it got voted down four to one last time, but we're bringing it up again. Can anyone explain to me why we're, oh, Voitz wants, he's the mayor, that's right. So he sets the agenda. He wants it so bad, even if it causes the city to go bankrupt. Cause, you know, look, he doesn't even have a high school education. He doesn't understand numbers. Look at him on the TCA. Do you think he understands the budget numbers on the TCA? Hell, no. And then he wants to get into a standalone power company? You know, it's right here, page four hundred and ninety-four, the full packet agenda, Mayor, did you read it? We gotta come up with five point seven million dollars. Where the hell's that gonna come from? Man, you just sued us for five hundred and fifty thousand. Okay? Five point seven million, where we gonna get there? You weren't here at the last meeting when they, they gave the, uh, seven-year forecast? Dude, in five years, we're negative two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Did you listen to what I said in the reports? Our financials look terrible going forward and you want to go off the deep end with five point seven million? But you don't care, you got five hundred thousand, you're happy. Page four sixty-two says right here, "The formation of an enterprise CCA also carries with it more direct liabilities relative to other CCA models." What the hell are we doing this for? For example, the city would incur additional staff and contract service costs. So we're gonna go out five point seven million dollars in a commodity market competing against Edison for one or two percent that we don't even know where we're gonna get? We could end up what happened to WCE there in Riverside County. We could go, we give up. That's exactly what could happen to us. But for you, it's like your own little personal toy because you're the one who voted for it. I don't get it. Don't you see the, like I said, you, you can't understand numbers. Lake Forest CCA would be participating in a competitive power market and subject to evolving state requirements and regulations. While a rate discount should be achievable in the long run, market prices and SEC rate volatility, you know what that means? Volatility? We could get wiped out in one day. Do you even buy stocks, buy and sell stocks, Voitz? Doubt it. Have to, and it comes about partnering. Did any other South County cities contact you and it's like, hey, let's work together? Did you hear from Mission Viejo, Laguna Hills, Elisa Viejo, Dana Point? Any of them? Nope. Cause I see that thing's a joke. So if you want to partner, go for it. But none of the South, they want nothing, whoa, stay away. Cause I watched their council meeting, they want nothing to do with it. But only you are on this crazy train. I don't get it. You're on the TCA crazy train, now you want to get on the CCA crazy train? You know, and you're a guy that doesn't even have a high school diploma. You don't even understand numbers. You don't understand market volatility, but you're gonna put us in a bankruptcy? Nope. Ain't gonna happen. Ain't gonna happen.
Is that our last comment? Okay. Staff report, please. Presentation.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Tonight, we are gonna discuss Community Choice Aggregation, otherwise known as CCA or CCE. Tonight, staff will provide the City Council with an update on the public engagement efforts to date, discuss upcoming City Council meetings slash discussion items. At that point, staff will then turn it over to Mr. Steven Adams, City Manager with King City, for a presentation on the King City Community Power CCA. He's with us tonight over Live Size. Mr. Adams, thank you very much for, uh, for being here. From there, our consultant, Mr. Mark Fulmer, President of MRW and Associates, will provide an update on Western Community Energy. Like Mr. Adams, Mr. Fulmer also is joining us on Live Size. Lastly, we will end with a City Council discussion. Please feel free to interject at any time during the presentation to ask questions or voice concerns. Here's a little bit of background. On April sixth, twenty twenty-one, the City Council approved the CCA ad-hoc's recommended public engagement plan to gauge the community's desire for energy options. Staff would like to remind the City Council and members of the public to please visit our CCE website at lakeforestca.gov for up-to-date information on CCA. The following slide illustrates staff's outreach efforts to date. In addition to weekly updates to the CCE webpage, staff has also sent out monthly electronic newsletters targeting both members from the business and residential communities. In addition, staff hosted a pop-up city hall at Heroes Park on April twenty-four. The city hosted a town hall on May ten. Flashvote conducted its first CCA survey on May nineteen. Staff hosted an HOA roundtable on June seventeen. And most recently, staff attended the Fourth of July Concert and Fireworks Show and manned a pop-up city hall to answer questions about the city, including anything related to CCA. Staff also wanted to inform the council that later this month, the leaflet, which will include a CCA special pullout, will hit homes in the coming weeks. Staff also prepared a CCA article in the in-business newsletter, which is a publication that's mailed to all business addresses in the city. That will also be out later this month. Staff is also planning a second town hall event, a second Flashvote survey, and will continue with weekly updates to the CCA webpage, monthly electronic newsletters, and pop-up city hall events. This slide illustrates additional presentations that will go before the City Council over the next few months. Tonight, we will hear from King City Community Power and Enterprise, also referred to as a standalone CCA, as well as an update on Western Community Energy, a JPA CCA, from our consultant, Mr. Fulmer. Later this month, we will hear from Cal Choice, which is a hybrid JPA governance model. Next month, we will hear from an established JPA. In September, the City Council will receive an Orange County Power Authority presentation. And lastly, the second meeting of September will feature an eight-month recap of efforts. As a reminder, this schedule is tentative and may change in the future. I would like to turn it over to Mr. Steven Adams, City Manager for King City. He and his team will lead the King City Community Power presentation. As a reminder, the City Council may ask any questions during the presentation.
Thank you. Can you hear, hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you.
Great. Well, thank you for your interest in King City's Community Choice Energy Program. Uh, why don't you go to the next slide now? We only have a couple of slides, but just wanted to highlight, uh, a few things regarding our experience that we've learned. So we launched our program in July of two thousand and eighteen, following an RFP process, preparation of a feasibility study, peer review, and then several public meetings. We considered the options of doing our own program versus joining the regional JPA, which was Monterey Bay Community Power at that time, uh, now Central Coast Energy. It was not an easy or unanimous decision. We discussed it during several meetings and had a lot of community input. One of the challenges of King City is that we are not only a small community, but also have a large number of low-income households, which means a large, uh, which means a large percentage of customers have discounted electricity rates. This creates some challenges in generating income and we've struggled a bit to emulate all the programs offered by Central Coast Energy. However, I think we've done pretty well on that and the program thus far has been a success. Uh, given, uh, that we have a large percentage of disadvantaged, disadvantaged households, it also means that we have significant needs in our community. For that reason, the council felt it was important to utilize this opportunity to target revenues for specific needs in our community. Under the Monterey Bay proposal, which was a very, which it was and is a very good program, but the problem was we, we would have very little say in where the money was allocated. And some of the needs in, uh, the other larger, uh, cities were very different from, from ours. Um, so that was the primary reason that we went forward with our own program was so that we could control, uh, where the money is spent and really target it on our unique needs in our community. Um, you can go to the next slide. So we identified four, five key goals, um, of the program, which was the lower rates, to provide solar for low-income households, to add streetlights to prevent crime, to increase clean energy, and to pursue a solar or wind power project. So we, um, as far as some of the results thus far, we just paid for a new sol- uh, for new solar lights on our skate park and we'll be installing ten lights to one of our streets in a couple of months where we have a couple of migrant farm worker housing projects. We've assisted one hundred low-income households with adding solar to their homes. We've consistently maintained rates lower than PG, PG&E and either equal to or lower than the other CCAs. Last year, we provided, uh, nearly, uh, one hundred percent clean energy. And we are working on an RFP for a solar or wind power project and a feasibility analysis on the option of purchasing battery projects instead due to the glut on the solar market that was mentioned by one of the gentlemen earlier. Uh, the primary, uh, unique thing about our program is we contract for the program to be managed on a turnkey basis. We selected Pilot Power Group to run the program for us through an RFP process. They also prepared the feasibility study, so we also contracted for a peer review to ensure the validity of the study's findings since they were going to become the operator. My biggest concern about the program was how much time it would involve because we have a very, very small staff, but it's worked out very well. They handle almost everything. I approve invoices on a weekly basis and the council approves rates, programs, the annual budget, and any major policy decision. Therefore, it requires minimum staff time and we are paid, paid for that time. Uh, thus far, we are solvent. We are close to reaching our, we were close to reaching our reserve goal. We had a little bit of setback this year due to the PCIA approved by the PUC for this year. I think one of the biggest advantages I have seen of having a small individual program is that when we have customer issues, uh, which aren't very often, but when we do, Pilot Power's been able to work out very individualized solutions, uh, for their problems, um, which is very unique and I think it fits in well with our community because we provide, try to provide, uh, you know, very individualized, uh, uh, service. Uh, we have Dennis Vermette here, who is the lead of Pilot Power Group, and wanted to provide him a couple of minutes this evening to, uh, just discuss with you about how the turnkey program works, how our finances work, and a little bit about how our power purchases work. So I'll turn it over to Dennis now and you can move on to the next slide.
Thank you, Steve. Um, and good evening, everybody, and thank you, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak with you today. So as Steven indicated that, um, although we are sort of operating the CCA for the community and for, uh, King City, uh, it is facilitated through City Council. So we are, um, as, as Steve indicated, any changes in rates or structures, structural changes in the program have to be approved by City Council. So there is, it's something where we're basically, uh, ensuring that city is fully aware of any changes that are made, approving all processes. Um, although we, you know, when we enter into procurement and contracts, uh, Steve is, is provided with the contract and he actually executes on behalf of, of King City. So when we're, we're not, uh, entering into contracts on the city's behalf and ensuring that the city is fully aware of the, the agreements that we have. So part of the, the process that we have or that... or the part of the engagement we have is is customer engagement, which consists of customer correspondence. So all the correspondence is facilitated through us. We get approval for the city to basically ensure that it meets their needs. Customer care and call center. We have actually two call centers, one here in San Diego and another one in LA, LA County. And then for procurement, we go through the forecasting, energy supply, renewables, resource adequacy, schedule coordination with the California ISO. I think one of the things that we've been able to help King City with is that because we manage a larger portfolio of other customers, so when we're out procuring for them, we're including King City in that procurement process. And for example, we actually just did a, as a requirement for SB 350 and SB 100, you are supposed to procure 65% of your renewable energy CAT 1 in a long-term contract, and actually, King City has already entered into that agreement and have entered into an 11-year solar transaction. So they've met the requirement that they need to date. Data management, we take all the EDI from the ISO as well as from PG&E to be able to determine what charges are going to be applied to customers' accounts. And so then we basically relay through EDI transfer information back to utilities so they can get it on the customer's bill. And then for technical services, at rate setting, which again, we go through the process generally just once a year, but if it's needed more often, we will go through, you know, we will basically prepare a package to be presented to city council, and they approve the rates, and then we instill those rates into our system to be able to do the billing for it. We provide accounting and financial support in just basically doing statements for the city so they can basically present that to their city council and really trying to minimize the amount of work that the city has to do so that we're really kind of, again, it's one-stop sort of shop and be able to do all that, all that processing. And then finally, legal and regulatory, we do all the filings for KCCP with the PUC, CEC, and any regulatory agency. Do more, but but this would probably be cover off the key components, and we really kind of, it's soup to nuts and being able to provide the city that full service. And as Steve indicated, whenever there's a concern from a customer on pricing, you know, or any issue, we get involved right away and deal it, deal with that customer directly. And a lot of times, they'll either go through our call center, then basically get escalated up. And in some cases, I'll be involved in those processes too. And then we basically engage the city if we if we need a decision by them. So we're very much active with the city's involvement. And I don't think we take up too much of Steve's time, but you know, we do like to stay involved and be partnered with the city as much as we can. So I think that's all I had to say, Steve.
Great. Thank you, Dennis. So do we have any, any questions?
I think we do. Councilman Servo.
Thank you, Mayor. First question, Steve, is how did you guys finance the upstart? And how much was that in dollars?
I'll have to turn that question over to Dennis, because it was all financed through, through Pilot Power Group. And they had already established credit, because they'd been in the business for quite a while. So that that was a big advantage. Dennis, did you want to talk about that a little more?
Yeah, so we financed the initial startup costs for the CCA. And when I guess I, I'm saying startup costs as everything in advance of the launch, we basically did per bono. We didn't charge the city for it. Any, any hard costs in the sense that we had to, as I'm sure most of you know, that you have to do four notices. So if there was actual dollars that were spent, so either for the noticing, we did sort of add that into sort of our bill. But we never billed the King City for those costs up until they launched in July of 2018. They didn't receive their first bill from us until, I believe, November of 2018. So all those startup costs, we basically financed for for King City. And then they termed it out over a two-year period. They paid it off with funds that were generated from the CCA. To date, it's, it's been, it's been paid off almost a year ago. And yeah, we pretty much just covered all the costs. So there was no upfront money that the city had to provide.
Okay.
And then, and the whole, the whole legal structure was set up so that the, that the pilot power assumed the risks. So there's very little risk the city had to assume. And then, and then also, if I understand it correctly, Dennis, some, some of that, some of the need to build up some of those initial costs is to establish credit ratings. But since they had already been working in this business for a long time, they already had that credit, while some of the other CCAs, they have to build up that credit over the, you know, over the first year or so.
That is correct.
One of the things that keeps coming up time and time again is, one of the reasons we even started looking at this is the possibility of of lower rates for our citizens and our businesses. Have you guys found the rate competitive to Edison or lower?
So King City is in PG&E's territory, so the the rate structure is a little bit different. I'll be honest, Edison is very competitive. And so it is, can't be challenging to provide that discount that that everybody's looking for, especially in, and I think, you know, Mark has has got comments later on to talk about, you know, some of the things that have happened at WCE. But but one of the things is with the changes with the PCIA and all the utilities are in essence doing this, that there is a, a recovery that they are trying to, what they view as an under collection of departing load, cost of departing load. And so they basically have increased the PCIA charges. And Steve had actually indicated this earlier, that in 2021, there was some fairly dramatic increases in the PCIA by PG&E, and other utilities are doing the same thing. But where rates basically have been increased, the discount has not been as as great as we'd like, even though they are still providing a discount below PG&E's rates. And they have ranged from initially a half a percent discount. And I know there was concerns by some of the community members that, you know, that is that a discount that's that's worthy enough? That was the initial rate that, discount that was provided. Last year, the rate was as great, discount was as 5%. So it does fluctuate depending on what's happening with the the rates, the generation rate by the utility, as well as the PCA charges. And we're anticipating that through 2021, that the utility would have collected or hopefully have collected its under collection and that the PCA will revert back to its sort of normal schedule. You know, and so rates, then the discount could be, you know, sort of brought back in. So there has to be some flexibility in the rate structure to be able to sort of either increase or decrease, but still providing savings to the customers.
Thank you. Now, Mr. City Manager, one of the other concerns that we had as a city is we also run a small crew here at the City Council of Lake Forest. You said it came fairly easy, and did you have to add extra staff members on?
No, we didn't, and we are really small. So there's a big concern here. I mentioned we went through an RFP process, and so different proposers presented some different structures. And so one of the prime reasons we went with King City Community Power is that they'd structured, structured it as a really comprehensive team, and they would be running the program, and then they had these sub subcontractors handling each, you know, each part of the, of the program. Some, some other CCAs do it similarly, but kind of manage it themselves, and then they do a lot of the subcontracts themselves. So we, we don't have to do, we don't do any work in managing any of the contracts with these different agencies other than King City Community Power, that they are the only ones we deal with. And they're, they operate pretty independently in the day-to-day operations. But like Dennis said, all the expenditures come to me from, for approval. We identify the goals, that we work those into the budget, and the council approves the budget, really just as part of our overall city budget process, which is really the same thing. And then they, and then we bring the rate increases to them and provide them with options, you know? The way this works is, you know, there's a certain amount of discretionary revenue, and we have those five goals, and then we work with the council to decide, you know, how much we want to allocate to each of those five goals to to accomplish everything and what are, what are the highest priorities. But yeah, it's worked, it's worked really, really well in terms of the amount of staff time it's required.
Since it was July, it was July 2018? You've done 100 low-income houses with solar? That's outstanding.
Yeah, that was actually early on. We've kind of refocused some of our benefits to the other goals right now. So we launched a pretty extensive program the first year, and we work with grid alternatives, and they were also part of the the team initially. And they focused strictly on that program. We gave them the money, and they ran with it. And I think it took, yeah, it was like less than two years they got, they got it installed in 100 homes.
Thank you. I think Councilman Servo has another question.
Yeah, two-part question. What's the length of the contract of purchasing power? And have you seen a variance in that purchase price? How much is it varying these days?
So there has been a fair, a fair amount of volatility in in the market prices right now. So we have actually purchased for King City out to 2023 and 2024. And then the renewable, which I had mentioned earlier, that's 11-year contract, which actually is even less than just, you know, purchasing, which is the desirable renewables, category one renewables. So there's actually some savings there. So we try to go out as far as we can, obviously not trying to speculate on what's happening in the market. 2020, which I think, you know, Mark will actually indicate, that was a fairly volatile year. There was several months that prices had spiked, and, you know, that, you know, caused some havoc. The, you know, COVID and everybody's sort of working on at home tends to change the shape of demand. So that, you know, can be a little bit problematic. But we do go as far as we can in that procurement process, because we want to be able to lock in prices as best we can for the for the coming years. Resource adequacy is probably one of the biggest challenges right now. It's very difficult to go out long-term with resource adequacy. You're due it sort of year over year. But prices for local system flex have just skyrocketed, which there was a comment earlier that has impacted.
Yeah, one final question. Comparing the WCE situation, Riverside, with their bankruptcy, they had their Joint Power Authority in 2018 as well, and they also have lower-income residents that apparently stopped paying their bills with all their, that increased energy to the heat and whatnot. And we have a fair amount of lower-income residents as well. So what have you guys done differently that's allowed you to mitigate that? And are you seeing people not paying their bills because of the increased pricing?
I mean, there has been in some increase in what we had done. Initially, in the launch of the CCA, it's built in a reserve each month to be able to counter some of that potential non-performance and non-payment. So there has been some, but there's always been enough. Something that you have to be kind of cognizant of is that for non-payment and the difference recently is because there's a moratorium on being able to cut off a customer's electricity, which really is at the utility level. Something that we've encouraged, King City, is that when we do see customers that have not been paying, and if they're not on a payment plan with the utility or balanced billing, then we basically send those customers back to the utility, obviously with the approval of city council before we do that. But we want to make sure that we're not, you know, there's care customers that we don't want to be impacting negatively by sending them back to utility. So it's, it's very much a massaging and looking at the customers each individually to see what their payment performance is before we make those decisions.
Okay, thank you. I'm done.
We, we also, I'm not sure how big a factor it's been so far, but the King City, we've had a very aggressive rent and utility assistance program working with our local residents and actually targeting anybody that has the delinquent accounts in any of the utilities that we work with. So we've gone out and gotten, well, probably about $750,000 in grants that we're implementing and getting out there and trying to get that assistance to those, those type of customers.
I have one last question. Thank you for both being here with us tonight as we make this decision. You've obviously helped us make a wiser decision. Dennis, how many cities do you assist with?
So right now, we actually only assist with, with King City. There is a JPA with the JPAs that are, there is sort of a handful of providers that seem to, I'd say, be successful in achieving those, those contracts. So King City is is the one that we have active today.
And one last question. With your energy rates you guys saved last night compared to what you guys were to, what was the percentage of solar or green energy you were, you were human on that last buy? 55%?
So, so they will meet their, their long-term requirements of 65% of category one renewables. So that's either going to be solar or wind. Not a rec, so that's energy plus the, the actual rec component. And that is an 11-year contract.
Councilman Motazidi, are you on?
I am, yes.
Do you have any questions for City Manager Adams or Dennis?
No, I don't. That was very informational. Thank you.
All right. Well, seeing nothing further, I thank you for your time tonight. Staff, we're good?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Adams. And as we discussed earlier, if you can wait until the end of the presentation, just in case there are any last-minute questions by the city council, it'd be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
That brings us to Mark.
We will now hear from Mr. Fulmer, President of MRW and Associates. He has an update on Western Community Energy, also referred to as WCE. Formed in 2018, WCE was established as a CCA to serve the cities in Western Riverside County. WCE began providing power to customers in April and May of last year, 2020. In May of 2021, WCE filed for Chapter 9 bankruptcy protection and weeks later adopted resolution authorizing it to formally deregister with the California Public Utilities Commission. As a result, WCE customers were transferred back to Southern California Edison, the region's IOU, for their electric service. This is the first CCA to have failed. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Fulmer.
Good evening, Mr. Fulmer.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. It's good to be back. Next slide, please. A lot of this we've already heard about. In fact, just from Adrian a moment ago, the background on Western Community Energy. Even the, even though they had six cities, still a relatively modest number of customers, and again, residential, primarily residential, and a large fraction of low income, about 40% were on the low-income programs. Next, please. So what happened? As you've heard, at the end of May, they filed Chapter 8 bankruptcy with the intent or hope to restructure their debt and continue service. However, after the bankruptcy, their power However, after uh, the bankruptcy, uh, their power providers uh, chose, as I understand, to exercise their options to terminate the contracts for non-payment. And uh, lacking credit, they were not able to uh, purchase power uh, through the state markets. Therefore, they couldn't provide any more power. Uh, in June, uh, on the eleventh, they requested to decertify. And what that means is they had uh, officially notified the state and the Public Utilities Commission that they would uh, cease serving their customers. Uh, from the eleventh through the twenty-fifth, the customers that were getting serviced through Western Community Energy were all returned back to what they call bundled service for from Southern California Edison. Next, please. So the big question is how or really why did this happen? And I I believe it's a confluence of a number of negative events. Uh, first of all, the COVID nineteen crisis had two important impacts on them. First of all, it increased residential power purchases. People were home and because they were primarily serving residential customers, the amount of power that they were being asked to serve was higher than had been anticipated. Uh, secondly, uh, they had much greater non-payment issues. Uh, unlike uh, we heard from uh, King City, the uh, Western Community had made a commitment not to uh, return their customers to Edison service, although they did have that option. It may have done that towards the end, but in gen- at the beginning of the uh, of the problems, they were committing to keep those customers on their own books. Now, compounding this fact that they have uh, you know, having to provide greater amounts of power, the power prices in the wholesale market greatly increased in August twenty nineteen, corresponding to a uh, southwest-wide uh, heat storm. Uh, at the same time, they were still needing to purchase reliability products. The RA uh, the RA market is such that you have to buy a certain amount uh, a year ahead and then other amounts you can buy closer to time. And uh, effectively, the market for that is very tight and having to pay very, very high prices uh, to buy these products to remain in compliance, which they did not actually succeed in fully doing, but still significant uh, outlays to try to meet those reliability requirements. The hedging and risk management strategies that were in place uh, just were not sufficient to deal with the confluence of those two things. Uh, because it was a new entity that began serving uh, literally uh, weeks before the state shut down from COVID nineteen. Uh, they had no opportunity to uh, build up any financial reserves. Uh, other CCAs, uh, in particularly you heard about uh, King City, had the opportunity to have some reserves on hand to help meet some of the uh, unexpected costs that were being incurred because of COVID. They did not have that opportunity because they were uh, effectively brand-new. What credit products they did have were being exhausted for working capital and as uh, financing their startup. So they were in um, just in a very bad place. Next, please. So on with respect to dollar is a very high-level assessment. Their their annual budget is around a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five million dollars a year. Uh, the non-payment is over six million. Uh, effectively, they had budgeted uh, basically a half a percent of their revenue as, you know, write-off or non-payment. And uh, that amount was over ten times or they experienced actually over ten times the non-payment than they were expecting. The extra power purchases in August because of the heat storm uh, totaled twelve million. Uh, again, we've identified excess resource adequacy costs. I didn't find any specific numbers on that. Reported over forty million dollars in debt. And uh, with the higher PCIAs that were in place in twenty-one, along with uh, prices that although they did come down from the August highs, the power prices are remained higher in twenty twenty-one. They saw that, uh, you know, even without a lot, with even without that debt, they would have a difficult time breaking even. So and hence the uh, bankruptcy and decertification. Next, please. So what did that mean for the member cities? When I say WCE member, that means the uh, six cities that uh, formed up the JPA. Uh, first of all, who's uh, on the hook for the bankruptcy deck? Um, that's going to be up to the court and the judge. Uh, I had a conversation with the General Counsel of WCE about these matters and he pointed out three things. First of all, uh, their JPA agreement, just like the one for Orange County Power Authority, has a number of uh, sections that provide explicit uh, protection for the members against the JPA debt. And so uh, he believes that that is a a major step in protecting the cities. Secondly, the energy contracts that they were, they had entered into explicitly said that they did not have recourse to JPA members. So the power companies in their explicitly said that they didn't uh, have the right to go after the cities for that debt. Now, that being said, this being America, a lawsuit is unfortunately always possible, but nothing has been uh, filed against uh, WCE or any of the member cities. So the bottom line is it appears that the member cities were probably protected um, ag- against any creditors. Uh, a second piece that has to do more with the WCE customers, that is the uh, individual accounts that were taking power from WCE is what they call the re-entry fees. And that was touched upon a a moment ago. But the quick details there are every CCA has to file a bond that would des held, that would compensate their host utility in the event that the CCA uh, had to decertify. So WCE indeed had posted this bond. And uh, Southern California Edison is calculating how much it will cost to reintegrate these customers into their service. And that uh, hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars will go towards uh, that reintegration. Uh, in the event that that is not sufficient to cover the reintegration, the cost to serve these customers are more than that. Then WCE or excuse me, Edison has the right to charge uh, the WCE customers. Again, not the members, the customers uh, via rate surcharges for any uh, remaining amount that isn't covered by that hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Whether they are going to do that and if so, how much um, is still unknown. And next. Uh, what does it mean going forward? Um, these are generally my opinions. Uh, first of all, I think financing is going to become uh, more difficult. And uh, the financing will probably want to have you have a greater line of credit, which will make it a a bit more challenged to uh, get off the ground. Uh, power providers may require additional surety to make sure that uh, they are paid uh, in the event of financial problems from the uh, from the JPA. Uh, I think the JPAs will learn that uh, their hedging strategies may not have been, may not be sufficient and be reconsidering that and making sure that they do have protection against market movement, even outside the amount that uh, you would perhaps normally expect. Uh, and similarly uh, on rate-making and building up financial reserves. As I've emphasized in my earlier talks, uh, a big role of the JPA Board or the CCA Board is to decide how to allocate funds above and beyond the cost to operate. Uh, and I believe that uh, this uh, this experience will put a greater emphasis on building up financial reserves before pursuing any other additional programs. Uh, that concludes my summary. And so uh, Adrian or uh, or questions or whatever is next. Thank you.
Council, do you have any questions? Um, with with the the law loss of that, um, are those other cities, um, only choices go back to the Edison Company? Are there any other?
That is correct.
Yeah. Um, is it, so this was the first, this was the first bankruptcy in the state of California?
It is the first CCA to fail in the state, yes.
Yeah. Um, if and nothing further, um, Adrian? Oh, yeah, Mayor, Mayor Protam.
Yeah, so at my first city council meeting back in December, um, CCA was one of the items on the agenda. And I had a feeling of being rushed and pressured to make a choice to join OCPA. Um, only after we figured that we'd get a an extension that I vote to say, yes, we'll we'll go on. Just so I can uh, do some additional research and uh, make a more informed decision. And after learning about uh, CCAs and the only option at the time was OCPA, which EES uh, was the consultant for OCPA and uh, WCE, correct? So um, and I knew that OCPA was not a good fit for Lake Forest. After countless hours of research, um, conversations with people in the know, I had a long conversation with Jim Phelps, um, who's well-versed in CCAs. I think now I can make a better decision. Um, I still feel like I'm being rushed uh, and pressured to join the CCA because Senate Bill One Hundred sets a twenty, a goal of twenty-four, at twenty forty-five for us to be at these renewable uh, zero-carbon resources. And by twenty thirty, we need to be at sixty percent. Well, SCE is on track to be there, right? And they have fifteen million customers or they got this huge number of customers. They don't have a problem with RAs. So with uh, WCE uh, bankrupt uh, bankruptcy and their their site and COVID, I think they were going to have problems anyway. Marin County is paying eleven percent more than PG&E, which in a couple of months, which erased a whole year of savings that their their CCA was giving them. San uh, San Jose Clean Energy, like Mr. Obregas says, was fined six point eight million because they couldn't cover the RA cost. And uh, they're probably next on line with WCE. Uh, and during the town hall, Mr. Fulmer said that right now is not a good time for us to join a CCA. And he just said, in the future, it's going to be even more difficult. Um, so right now, my thought is if it's not broke, don't fix it. So I'd like to make a motion to postpone any further conversations about CCAs and just watch CCAs over the next couple of years and then we'll come revisit it. So that's my motion.
I can second that.
Okay, this motion has been seconded.
Uh, Mayor Voits?
I'm abstaining.
Mayor Protam Pecano?
Aye.
Councilmember Serbo?
Aye.
And Councilmember Motazidi?
Aye.
Okay, so that's three ayes, one abstention and one absent. Motion passes. Three uh, three one.
Mr. Fulmer, thanks for your participation. And City Manager Adams, thanks for staying with us.
Yeah, you're welcome. It's been my pleasure to provide uh, the services that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fulmer.
Okay, that brings us to item number eighteen.
Do we have public comment?
So item eighteen is the Construction Contract Award for Protective Permissive Left-Turn Phasing Program, two thousand nineteen through oh-nine. And we have one speaker. It's Andrew O'Connor.
Andrew O'Connor, Foothill Ranch. I looked at this and I thought they must have put the comment in the wrong spot or or something, but it it is what it is. Three hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars for, it's really hard to say, protective permissive left-turn phasing program. That's a mouthful. You know, whenever I spend my money, I want to know what the benefit is. What do I get out of it? What do we get out of this? Councilman Serbo, it's they're kicking it off right there at uh, Town Center Marketplace. Can you explain what the benefit is that we're getting for that?
I can offline, yes.
Okay, I'll be more than happy to see your uh, offline because I don't see it. I think it's ridiculous, okay? Voits is all happy because uh, we're going to have more than Irvine. He talked like a little kid about a year ago about this when we kicked it off. Oh, we're going to have more than Irvine. That's great. I can tell him that, like a little kid. So yeah, go to Irvine, go to Rockfield and Oldfield. They have it right there. And I think they did the smart thing. They wanted to kick it off. They kicked it off at a low-volume intersection, okay? Uh, to try it out. And I go through there and I look at it and I'm I'm thinking, what the hell they do this thing for? This is a waste of money. It's ridiculous. But they did it. That's Irvine. So I'm still thinking, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. For what? The hardware is already there. The light posts are there. The cabin is there. The cabinet is there. The light is there. Okay, you change the software and you put a sign up there that tells people, you know, how to understand this thing. That's great. But I'm back to three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars is ridiculous. You know, Voits says we can't uh, pay for crossing guards at the at the school for our our young students. Don't have any money. Don't have any money. But he wants to spend three hundred and twenty-six thousand, Scott? Great. How about this? We have thirty-two deputies and two patrol officers. None of them have body cams. Why is that, Scott? But we have money to go get these stupid intersection lights? I'm glad you woke up. Why is it that we we still can't get two deputies, Mayor, that were budgeted last year that the city mayor keeps kicking the can down that she won't hire? But we can spend three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars for ridiculous protective permissive left-turn phasing program when we need two deputies? When arrests are up seventy-one percent, violent crime is up. We've already discussed and showed it. But we're wasting our money on this ridiculous thing. Can you explain why, Mayor? Of course you can't. Because it's a toy for you, because you're going to go over and tell everyone in Irvine, we're like you. We got more than you because that's your mentality. You think it's a toy. The other, the other intersection is going to be Rockfield at Gateway entrance. Boy, oh, boy, I'm predicting right now traffic accidents right on top of each other. Why? Because when you turn left off of uh, Rockfield and the Gateway, City Attorney, there's not enough volume to take the cars. So this person's going to think they can clear and they're not. So we're either going to have, we're going to have a lot of T-bone accidents there. And uh, Chief Taylor's in the back of the room. I'm going on record and saying, the Gateway Center, you're going to have a lot of accidents. That's right, Keith. You're on record too. I'm glad you liked it. So this is ridiculous. It's just stupidity. And it's led by you, Mayor Voits, because you don't understand anything we get ourselves into. And why did you, you know, tonight on the vote, the way you voted shows your mentality. You are the dumbest person I've ever seen. And if we put eight dollars on that path at Pittsburgh, you never would have sued us for five hundred thousand that you deny you know about. And I have the case number.
Except only public speaker for that item. All right. Adam Clark, do we have um, any presentation?
Yep, Mayor, members of the city council, Tran will come up and give a short PowerPoint presentation on uh, the permissive left turn.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager. Uh, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers and councilwomen. Tonight, I'll be doing a quick overview of what a protected permissive left turn is and where we are implementing it. So a little bit uh, a background before we get into that. I want to go through um, just simply that in December two thousand and eighteen, city council approved the citywide protective permissive left-turn phasing study prepared by Albert Grover and Associates. In that study, uh, there were uh, several uh, intersections that were identified uh, to have uh, improvements in traffic flow, three of which was brought to city council for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-one CIP budget. Uh, the improvements are shown on this slide. The location is Town Center Drive and Marketplace. Protective permissive left turns will be implemented at all directions. Rockfield Boulevard and Center Drive, the protective permissive left turn will be only implemented in the eastbound, westbound direction, which is Center Drive. And then signing and striping improvement- And then signing and striping improvements at El Toro Road and Toledo Way to accommodate what we call pedestrian share operation. So recently, in May 2021, city staff received bids and is recommending tonight the approval of that contract award. But really, what I'm here tonight is to explain what protective permissive left turns are. And so, some of you might have remembered that terminology or maybe something of some sort in a driver's license test or something like that. Unfortunately for me, or fortunately, I, it's been a very long time since I've taken that test. So, this is kind of a refresher course, we hope to educate the community, because this is different. This is something that you may have not driven through, and we want to make sure that you're aware of the operation. So, what you see here in the top right slide is what we would consider in our traffic and general field as kind of the older methodology of implementing protective permissive left turns. We call it as the doghouse, because it resembles a doghouse. This has traditionally been used all over the states and continues to be used. But, we're not using that. The reason being is because we decided that we wanted to implement something a little bit better. Statistically speaking, this is more intuitive to the driver. And so that proposed condition is what you see here on the right-hand slide, or right-hand part of the slide. In addition to that, there's going to be a sign that's associated with this signal head that says "Left Turn Yield on Flashing Yellow." So the difference between the existing condition and the proposed condition for a left turner is really what is, what you see between the steady yellow and the green arrow, which is a flashing yellow arrow. Very hard to explain, just with this illustration, so I thought I'd bring in kind of an animation of what you would typically or should experience at a flashing yellow arrow, or for short, FYA, operation. We can change this, but this is something that we think that we're going to implement in the beginning, so I just wanted to showcase this. So, hopefully this works. So, imagine you're coming up to the left turn lane. You're going to approach, and you're approaching a green arrow. The opposing through traffic is going to have a red ball, meaning they're stopped. Traditionally, a steady green arrow means that you are protected, meaning that you will not have conflicts in the crosswalk or the opposing traffic. So you're, you're free to go. What will happen in the next operation is that you'll get your steady yellow, like you're used to and accustomed to, which tells you to prepare to stop. Notice that the opposing through is still red. Then, it'll go to a steady red arrow. Once that goes into the steady red arrow, the opposing through will get the green, the pedestrian will be allowed to walk, flashing yellow arrow turns on, and all turning movements with that flashing yellow arrow must yield to oncoming traffic and pedestrians. Eventually, the "Don't Walk" will come up, and then the pedestrian should be cleared the intersection at that point in time. Once you have that, the opposing through will get a yellow ball. Notice that the flashing yellow arrow is still on. And then, the opposing through will get a red ball. Flashing yellow is still on, because if there are any folks that is still in the intersection at that point in time, they can go ahead and clear the intersection without blocking it. And finally, and two more steps, I shouldn't say that, but two more steps, they'll get the steady yellow, like they're accustomed to, to let them know that they're going to be prepared to stop. And then finally, they will get the steady red arrow. So that's the operation of a flashing yellow arrow. Of course, with any new traffic signal operational changes, we want to educate the public before we want to implement. And that's very important to this, because like I said, some people may not have driven through here. There are areas locally and places that people may frequent that has implemented, has implemented this successfully. Some nearby, Irvine was one that was mentioned this evening. But if you've been in Las Vegas, if you've been to Hawaii, you have experienced this. You've gone through this. So, this is just to educate the folks that, you know, maybe has not driven through it, but at least it gives you the material here. And we plan to coordinate with our PIO to push this out on all of our social media platforms to help further educate the public as we near completion or completion of construction of these two intersections that will be getting the PPLTs. As part of, so what's the future of PPLTs? So as part of the seven-year strategic business plan, a couple weeks back, the following locations were anticipated to begin a design in fiscal year 2023 and '24. So, those locations are listed there. We'll reconvene and have a conversation about that down the line during the two-year CIP update for those fiscal years, pretty much 2023 to 2025, after we had some time to assess the two original implementations and provide some feedback of what we saw out there. So, with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
I actually have one. The, the budget price, $326,000, does that include all these lights?
It includes all three, correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilman Servo?
Yeah, can you give us a little more background, Tran? We just came out of the Traffic Commission. Where was the genesis of, of this proposal?
Yeah, my understanding was, we were looking to improve traffic flow throughout the city. That's where my understanding is that we went to City Council. We heard from the Traffic and Parking Commission, and we heard, and it got brought up to the City Council. And it was decided that we look holistically at our entire city. What can we do to improve traffic flow at the end of the day? I think it was at the same time, at that time, I was at the City of Irvine doing the same type of study. And so, my understanding of our version of that was to just really look at what we can do. Traffic Management Center, how to manage traffic, congestion management, incident management, of which, the consultant, Albert Grover and Associates, identified the use of protective permissive left turns at protected locations, where there is lower volume of left turns, lower usage of pedestrian use, and potential time to improve the benefits of people frustrated that they just missed that green and they have to cycle all the way through. If you've driven through most of our city, if we're in coordinated time, you're in a larger arterial, you should expect about two to three minutes of wait time to cycle back to you. And that's because during the peak hours or during certain hours of the day, you're going to experience that due to the amount of volume that that corridor has. And we're trying to push that through. And so, with this, AGA felt that there are specific locations, the ones that I mentioned that we're implementing now, was just two of them. The other four was being, were, are being planned to be implemented as those that would have the greatest benefit out of all the signalized intersections in our city.
Okay, is that consultant report available for us to view and take a look and look at their assumptions and their recommendations and their benefit statement, things like that?
Yes, it is. And I've made it available for a lot of all the other discussions I've had with the Traffic and Parking Commission regarding PPLTs. I could certainly make that available as requested.
I'd like that, please, thank you.
You're welcome.
Some of the other cities, it's Huntington Beach, have they started integrating their permissible lifts?
So Huntington Beach uses the old traditional methodology, the doghouse, as I phrase it. So, it's really difficult, because you don't want to mix the two. Because it's too, it's similar, it's the same technology, it's the same idea, but different ways of going about it. So, Huntington Beach does have existing doghouses. They are considering flashing yellow arrows, but I have not, I don't know if they have implemented any of those yet.
So if you go back to slide four, so the ones that are going, there'll be four lights there?
That's correct. There'll be four signal indications with arrows on it. And the one on the third from the, from the top will be the flashing yellow.
So, putting those up, how, how much of public input are we, or have public information are we going to get up in a month of it? Before we install?
It will take probably about, we have it on our contract, I believe it's like 60 calendar days to implement. So, by the time summer ends, we should have it up and running. We have an eager contractor, if it's awarded tonight. They've provided all their submittals. The only hiccup that I'll mention and, and want to provide as a disclaimer is that procurement of the, the signal heads and equipment has been very difficult to procure, due to the fact that a lot of them may not be made in the US. And some of the, the shipment has been delayed. And some of our project has delayed due to those shipments.
Mayor, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I think one of the questions was, like, the, the public outreach. How much before the signals are put up is going to be done?
I plan on having that at the, the City Council meeting. I want to do a presentation, we're playing with our PIO to coordinate a lot of that, but certainly within the month. And then, once it is implemented, we're going to have portable, changeable message signs on the streets itself for at least two weeks, letting the, the general public know that's commuting through that, that that's not getting the social media pushouts, to be notified that traffic conditions has changed, exercise caution.
Mayor, may I make a comment or a question?
Yes, you may.
Thanks. I'm not really entirely convinced in this report that we need this. So the, the entire purpose is to basically allow for traffic to, to roll through on that left-hand turn during peak operations, is that correct?
Actually, this would be potentially best for off-peak. So when there's really no volume opposing you, you'll have a flashing yellow arrow, so you could freely do that as you cautiously make sure that there's no oncoming traffic or pedestrians in the intersection. So that's where you'll.
But we're changing, yeah, but okay, I understand that. So we're changing a signal, and this signal is very complicated, I have to tell you. And more and more people are on their phones and not paying attention, because I can't tell you how many times I'm the second car, and I have to honk at the first car because they're not paying attention. And now we're going to overcomplicate the signal, and we're sharing the crosswalk with a driver who's making a left-hand turn on a flashing yellow. I mean, is there any study or data that we have about accidents on these?
There, there are studies, for the most part. Like I said, statistically speaking, this is more intuitive to the user that when you do come up to it and you're not familiar with it, most folks will exercise extreme caution, because they're going to be looking at, what does this flashing yellow mean to me? Usually, if something flashing yellow, if you're aware, anything flashing yellow at you should provide a warning. So drivers will typically act with caution, and then the sign will be supplementing that. And at that point, that's why, like I'm, like I'm stating, education and public outreach is vital to the success of these implementations of the PPLTs.
Okay, so, yes, I understand that too. But I, I'm still just not convinced that we need something like this for off-peak traffic flows. I mean, do we know the time that people are waiting behind that light on Toledo? That's causing such a huge problem?
Sorry, Councilwoman. El Toro on Toledo will not be getting the protective permissive left turn. That actually is just a signing and striping improvement. So, the two locations is Town Center Drive, Marketplace, and Rockfield in Center.
Okay, so what, do we know the time that people are waiting on, on those intersections to make a turn? And what prompted the, I think, you know, Councilman Servo was alluding to this, what prompted, what's the threshold here that pushes it over the edge where we need to have this?
Yeah, so as part of this, and why it took a little bit of time, was we wanted to make sure it's, it's a benefit to those that are in a longer queue. So, what we have is what we call a queue detector in, in the backside of that left turn pocket. We draw that in so that if there are, say, an excess amount of left turners, three or four cars deep, then we're going to give them the protected arrow. And anything after that, if we don't detect vehicles still continuing tripping that queue detector, it's going to go to flashing yellow until the green arrow, or the green ball on the opposing traffic and the through traffic on the same side, they'll be allowed to go ahead and make that turn. So, as far as timing, timing patterns, we're going to fine tune that as we go along. But there are some information in the study that evaluated that as well, to give us mainly off-peak hours, but can be implemented during peaks. But we just need to fine tune that. As, as you probably know, that, that study was back in 2018. We're in 2021 with very different traffic patterns. And we will assess what those timing plans should be for these intersections when we go live with it.
Okay, and then my other question is, does the flashing yellow arrow start even when there's no one waiting to do a left-hand turn?
That is something that we could program. Like I said in my slide right here that you see, this is just one of the ways that we would be implementing it. The City of Irvine, our neighboring city, implements it this way. But we can implement it many different ways. We could start with the flashing yellow arrow right away. But I think what we want to do is be conservative about this at its initial approach. As people familiarize themselves within a month or two, we will start evaluating whether or not we make adjustments to those intersections.
How many, how many does City of Irvine have?
I implemented five out of the six that was proposed.
So, all five of those are operational now?
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're very different than Irvine. Our patterns are, are different.
I, I like this, to start off with those safer intersections to do, but I'll make a motion for staff recommendation. Okay. Please do a roll call.
Mayor Voits?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pecano?
Yes.
Councilmember Serbo?
Aye.
Councilmember Motazidi?
No.
Motion passes, 3-1.
Thank you. And that brings us to Mr. Assistant City Manager.
Mayor, and members of the City Council, just a couple announcements. It was the first day back for the Clubhouse, the senior center today. It was open from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. It will be open again tomorrow from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM and through July, Tuesdays and Wednesdays. Then it goes to Monday, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays in August, from 10:00 to 3:00. And then in September, we'll be back fully from Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday for the Clubhouse. Also today was the first day back for the Stars, the Stars program. They're back, 8:00 to 4:00 PM. And then shredding is now available back in the, the police services. So, just a couple announcements, it's, we're getting back to normal here slowly but surely. But that's it.
Thank you. Councilman Servo?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would like to, of course, thank the tremendous effort that went into a short-term planning for the Fourth of July event that has just received incredible comments. And so we're taking all those in, in terms of what we do for the future, but just a great event for community to come together. So, just want to thank all the staff and the leadership that went into making that happen. Secondly, I want to announce that July 17th, Saturday, will be a pop-up City Hall event at Foothill Ranch in the Town Center. We'll be having information on our website and publicize that, so details to follow. And then finally, my Jerry Garcia tie, this was actually given to me by Diane Rosenberg, the wife of the late Jim Rosenberg. So, I was honored to receive this tie, and I'm wearing it in his honor this evening. Thank you.
Councilwoman Motazidi, are you there?
I do thank everyone who attended and enjoyed the fireworks show and our vendors. I hope everybody enjoyed it, and I have nothing else to.
Mayor Protem Pecano?
Yes. I'd like to echo Councilmember Servo's remarks. Our congratulations and thanks to Brett and your, your staff. We have, I just want to also talk about Clean Lake Forest. We have two events coming up, one on September 18th and another one on November 6th. September 18th is going to be part of National Cleanup Day, and November 6th is going to be right around Veterans Day. The locations are still to be determined. We're working some details out with Saddleback Church, and more to follow. We'll have something out. And I just want to thank staff for putting everything together tonight.
I, I'd like to say thank you to the staff for doing such a fabulous job with our first and maybe only Fourth of July celebration with fireworks and a concert. I think that what we did is fundamentally magnificent because of the fact that we've never done it before. And if you look at the surrounding cities and what we did and put together, and the amount of people I think that it touched and people got to view, I think that Foothill Park was full, Borrego Park was full, Portola Park was full, our sports park was full. Saddleback Church parking lot expanded their whole west side of, all the parking on the west side of there. So, the amount of people that were able to see it from Foothill Ranch So, the amount of people that were able to see it from Foothill Ranch and Portola just magnified the beauty of what we did here in Lake Forest, and I think that it was a wonderful celebration for 245 years of freedom in America. I think we, you guys and staff did a great job, and so I just want to say thank you to everybody involved. Thanks to our deputy sheriffs that were here and working the streets. I don't think I heard of any major problems, so with the amount of people that were out and about, I think it was the time to celebrate, and our freedoms, and the fact that the pandemic is hopefully, Lord God help us, but behind us. So, I have nothing further, but a job well done. I'm very proud to be part of all of this city. Thank you so much, and I'll close this meeting.